Department of Transportation and the Taxi and Limousine Commission were invited to today's hearing. The administration has an important role to play in helping to coordinate the implementation of congestion pricing. And while I'm disappointed that the representatives from the administration are not here to answer the questions that are specific to their role, the committee will be following up with a public letter with questions to the administration. In this spirit, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the MTA for joining us today. I look forward to hearing from them as well as advocates and members of the public. I want to thank my staff and committee staff as well for their hard work. Mark Chen, counsel to the committee, Samuel Breitbart, counsel to the committee, Kevin Kotowski, senior policy analyst, John Basile, senior policy analyst, Michael Sherman, senior financial analyst, Benjamin Fang from the Speaker's press team, Jack Segenthaler, my policy and budget director, and Renee Taylor, my chief of staff. I'd like to acknowledge we have also in attendance today council members Farrah Lewis, David Carr, and we have council member Joanne Areola online. And we also are joined by council member Kagan and Holden, council member Brewer, and we are also joined by public advocate Jemani Williams. Now I'd like to invite the public advocates to offer remarks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is Jemani Williams and I am in the still existing office of Public Advocate for the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Brooks-Powers and the members of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure for holding this hearing. Thank you to President Davy and the entire team of the MTA for being here. In June of 2023, the final federal hurdle in the implementation of congestion pricing in New York City was cleared, marking the first time in the United States that a congestion pricing program is set to become reality. For years, New York City has been ranked as one of the most congested and traffic-clogged American cities. Per the program, drivers would be charged a fee to enter Manhattan south of 60th Street, one of the world's busiest commercial districts. The fee is yet to be set and will be determined by the MTA, which is overseeing the tolling program, which is also anticipated to generate $1 billion annually for MTA capital projects. Congestion pricing, which is slated to begin next year, aims to reduce traffic and pollution and provide much-needed transit improvements. I am in support of these goals and proud to have been so since relatively few of us were doing it in my first term in office, and want to emphasize that the pursuit of these outcomes should not be at the expense of others. I urge the Traffic Mobility Review Board to be conscientious of ongoing concerns raised by workers who rely on the vehicles, low-income drivers, residents, and businesses within the Central Business District tolling zone and neighbors of the surrounding communities. I do know that there might be some discussions about exemptions. They should be few and far between and slightly more discounts. Without those, there will be a disproportionate financial burden on taxi-for-hire vehicles, Uber, and Lyft drivers, and also the relatively few low-income drivers who go into the city. I do think there should be discounts for Uber and Lyft drivers. I would be remiss if I didn't say I think the burgeoning industry of Lyft and Uber did add to some of the congestion that we're speaking about. Without some of the discounts, we may see fare increases and decrease in demand for taxis and for hire rides. For rideshare drivers, the review board should find a way to ensure that rideshare companies are responsible for the fees, not the individual drivers, and the fee should not be the full proposed $22, nor should drivers be told for multiple trips. Furthermore, low-income drivers who may live in transit deserts and rely on their vehicles as a result, of course, this is relatively few, should also benefit from discounts and a limited number of tolls. It is my understanding that the MTA has already conducted studies and assessments on these proposals. It is my hope that they follow through to mitigate negative impacts to low-income and working-class New Yorkers. Additionally, another concern relates to unintended consequences for residents and businesses within the tolling zone as well as the surrounding communities. Small businesses in tolling zones have shared worries that congestion pricing may lead to lower foot traffic, and freights and deliveries may potentially be impacted. I'm a proponent of utilizing public transportation where applicable, but as we know, transit access is not equitable across the city. Thus, cars may be the only, one of the only means of transportation for some. There are also environmental concerns in regard to diverted traffic from congestion pricing. In particular, think of low-income communities of more color that may see greater traffic pollution in response to drivers finding alternative routes throughout the city. They may end up parking in these neighborhoods and take up additional parking spaces, which may lead to greater traffic buildup. Places like northern Manhattan and the South Bronx, who have the highest death and disease rates of asthma in the country, do not need to bear the brunt of more pollution. While congestion pricing is ultimately moving forward, and it should expeditiously without pause, with the goal of improving environmental outcomes, we must ensure that it does not end up becoming merely a redirection of existing traffic pollution, perhaps as a way we can prevent people from parking during the day from outside of those communities. I hope the Traffic Mobility Review Board, the MTA, and the DOT keep all the aforementioned concerns in mind and collectively devise an implementation and implement a congestion pricing program that is equitable across the board, mitigate financial burden on New York City working class and communities of more color, and improve environmental outcomes. Every New Yorker deserves a chance to live, work, and play in the city we call home. That includes improving transportation access and outcomes for all. Lastly, I just want to say as a driver, a cyclist, and a pedestrian, my family comes from a family of drivers, we do know that cars are the most protected, the most dangerous, and carry the most people, the least sorry people on the road, yet we have the most infrastructure for them. That is something that we definitely have to change. Most working-class and low-income New Yorkers do not drive in daily. They take mass transit. If you are driving daily into the city, you are doing so mostly, mostly because you want to do sort of convenience. And if we are going to change things, that means we have to change things. I know that it is difficult for some folks, but we have to. The money gained would be used to increase, make better mass transit for most of the people who travel. The preference would be people not to drive in during those hours and in midtown, but if they do, I think congestion pricing makes the most sense to do what we need to do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I will now ask the committee council to go over some procedural items and square the representatives from the MTA.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Sam Breitbart, counsel to the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure for the New York City Council. Our first witnesses will be from the MTA: Rich Davy, New York City Transit President, Jay Patel, the MTA Deputy CFO, Dr. Allison C. DiSerenio, MTA Bridges and Tunnels COO, and Will Schwartz, MTA Deputy Chief for Government and Community Relations. I will now administer the oath. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for having us here today, especially to the Chair, Brooks Powers, who we've been able to work together on a number of projects, and I look forward to continuing to do that. We appreciate the opportunity to be back with you all here today. As mentioned, I'm Rich Davy, the President of New York City Transit. I'm also joined today by the MTA Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Jay Patel, MTA Bridges and Tunnels Chief Operating Officer, Allison DiSerenio, and, as mentioned, Will Schwartz, who runs our Government and Community Relations for the MTA. I apologize in advance for going on a bit long today, but there's much to report since I was before you last March. I was here last March to discuss our budget, and in a few short months, the MTA situation has changed dramatically for the better. The enacted fiscal 2024 state budget included a framework for a long-term, stable funding for the MTA for years to come. Chair Lieber, myself, and the entire leadership team at MTA are grateful to the governor and the legislature for their bold leadership on addressing the MTA's fiscal cliff. Not only did they choose to address it head-on, but this was, which is not the typical one-shot shot solution that's occurred in the past, but deploying a long-term fiscal improvement. At our July board meeting, we presented the July financial plan showing, for the first time in anyone's recollection at the MTA, five straight years of balanced budgets through 2027. All our operating agencies, my friends at the commuter railroads included, are now crushing ridership records. I'm incredibly proud to say that subways have carried four-plus-million riders a day several times now, and I would expect we'll be breaking records when school comes back in a few weeks. Buses are holding strong, and paratransit is even exceeding its pre-COVID ridership totals, thanks to strong ridership and strong service there. This is key because continued gains in paid ridership, as mentioned by the Chair, is vital to the fiscal plan becoming a reality. I want to quickly pass it to Jay Patel, a colleague of mine who worked very closely in putting this and crafting this together with the legislature in the governor's office to walk through the details of the enacted state budget as it relates to MTA's funding. Jay?
Thanks, Rich. As mentioned, since the state's fiscal 2024 budget was enacted in May of this year, the MTA's finances are in a dramatically better state than they were when we presented the February financial plan to the MTA Board. Key elements of the funding package include an increase in the payroll mobility tax paid for by the city employers that will generate approximately $1.1 billion in recurring revenue to the MTA, a one-shot appropriation of $300 million in 2023, paid for by the state of New York, an increased contribution from our partners, the City of New York, on paratransit. Under the new framework, the city will cover 80% of costs, up from the 50%, or approximately $165 million over the next few years. 100% of the downstate casino licenses when they are awarded, that's up to three of them worth a total of $500 million each, and either 50% or 40% of the recurring tax revenues from those casinos will be dedicated to the MTA, depending on whether they are located within the five boroughs or one of the downstate suburban counties. $65 million is earmarked to bring the planned biannual fare increase down to our standard 4% rather than the 5.5% that was under consideration as part of our 2023 budget when we presented and adopted in December 2022. Less you think the MTA is getting off easy in this plan. The final funding plan in the budget calls for our operating agencies to deliver $400 million in recurring savings starting in 2024. Rich and his team are already delivering for efficiencies at New York City Transit, while Kathy Rinaldi is delivering the same for Long Island Railroad and Metro North. Furthermore, we are challenging the agencies to do more, hoping to push the $400 million in annual savings to $500 million in the out years beginning in 2025. The MTA's finances are on stable ground and include the largest labor contract for TW Local 100 ever negotiating, having been ratified earlier in the summer. This contract sets the pattern for our other bargaining units. This is an important piece of the financial plan, and we are pleased to achieve a good contract for the largest bargaining unit at the MTA in good faith. Rich, I'll pass it back to you to discuss some other good news out of the enacted state budget.
Great. Thanks, Jay. I was beyond excited that the enacted budget didn't just address our fiscal cliff, but indeed it invested in more transit. Thanks to a $35 million investment in the budget, we are increasing subway service in the off-peak hours, midday, early evenings, and weekends. These are periods of time that we're seeing the strongest ridership recovery relative to the pandemic, particularly as New Yorkers redefine their, quote, "nine-to-five commute." This is already underway as we've rolled out increased service on the J, GM, One, and Six lines, with more to come. Also, as part of the state's budget, we are going to study the impact of fare-free buses through a limited pilot on one route in each borough. The five routes were selected in conformity with the legislation included in the budget requiring the pilot, and will allow us to learn the impacts of this concept. The pilot will launch on the BX-18, the B-60, the M-116, the Q4, both limited and local, and the S-4696 later this month. Finally, from the state budget, I'm especially excited about a provision to expand authorization for automated cameras so we can build on the successes of our ABLE program, which helped keep non-buses out of our bus lanes, a big pet peeve of mine. Under this new authorization, the MTA and our partners at New York City DOT will be able to enforce bus-related traffic violations, such as double parking and illegal parking at bus stops. Again, I want to thank the Chair for your support on this issue, and the 34 city council members voiced their support, which was included, which was also instrumental. Your constituents and our 1.5 million bus customers appreciate your advocacy. Well, not directly resulting from the budget, once we knew we were on stable footing financially, we were finally able to advance the long-awaited second phase of our widely-popular e-Hail On-Demand Paratransit Pilot under the leadership of Chris Pangolinen and his team. We are proud to be tripling the number of participants in the pilot for nearly the exact same budget. We look forward to seeing how this program works with real parameters in place and with a more representative sample of our customers from the Accessor Ride customer base. I mentioned earlier that ridership is growing, and in addition, we are setting a new standard for service for New Yorkers. For the first six months of 2023, subways averaged 84% weekday on-time performance, the best six months we've had in at least a decade. Buses are almost 85% on time, and paratransit is doing better, with 96% of broker trips and 97% of primary carrier trips completed on time. And customers are telling us there is a difference. Customer satisfaction, since I've joined in the last 18 months, has grown across all three modes. 6 in 10 of our subway customers say they're satisfied or very satisfied, 65% of our bus customers satisfied or very satisfied, and 75% of our paratransit customers satisfied or very satisfied. Obviously, work to do, but we're making great strides. We've also come a long way in safety. The Collaborative COPS, Cameras, and Care Program put forward by the governor and the mayor has made a real difference in keeping customers and transit workers safe and holding those who commit crimes underground accountable. And thanks to our partnership with the NYPD Transit Bureau, and I want to call out Chief Kemper for his leadership in particular, crime underground is down 4.4% year-to-date, while ridership continues to rise. It's important to all of us that people feel safe and are safe using our system. On-time performance, safety, and cleanliness are paramount for my team and me. That's because these are the things that our customers and your constituents truly care about. Customer satisfaction, I have said often, is our north star. Faster, cleaner, safer service is our motto, which is why, in addition to our efforts on service, we've added 800 station and car cleaners over the last 12 months. Brand-new customer service centers have opened at 12 locations system-wide, with more on the way. Our station agents have come out of the booth, so-called "token booth," for the first time ever, and are now assisting customers throughout the station environment. That initiative was born out of New York City Transit's mandate to put our customers first. Dozens of stations are getting a refresh through our station renovation program when we close a station for a weekend and go in and do work and heavy clean. We will do 50, excuse me, 60 of these renovations by the end of this year, given that they are leveraging, as I mentioned, existing track work and shutdowns, so customers won't feel additional pain. I'm also pleased to report that we've opened 100 bathrooms at 50 subway stations, with bathrooms at five more stations opening up by the end of the month. Finally, as you know, we are moving full steam ahead on congestion pricing. Having completed the federally mandated environmental assessment for the Central Business District tolling program, and the infrastructure is being stalled as we speak, and the Traffic Mobility Review Board has begun meeting, in fact, they'll be meeting later today, to continue work toward their statutorily-guided process, which will make formal recommendations to the TBTA Board for the program's framework. As President of New York City Transit, I need to say that I am an enthusiastic supporter of congestion pricing, and we need it now. Not to just reduce the insane gridlock that slows our buses, emergency vehicles, and our paratransit vehicles, but also to improve public health, meet the state's ambitious climate goals, and, most importantly, fund MTA's historic 2020 to 2024 capital program. The money raised from congestion pricing is going to help pay for much-needed upgrades that will bring our transit system into the 21st century, from accessible stations to new rolling stock like our brand-new R211 subway cars on the A Line, Madam Chair. In fact, we rolled out our fourth this week. Their cutting-edge subway cars replacing 50-year-old trains currently eligible for the AARP, running on the A and C Lines. That is what congestion pricing is going to buy, investment in our transit system. So we're excited about taking this next step in the approval process. Before I conclude, I do want to take a moment to voice both my personal appreciation and the MTA's as well for the mayor, the speaker, and this council for increasing the funding for the Fair Fares program in the enacted city budget. Chair Brooks-Powers, I know how hard you and your colleagues worked to push for more, and we continue to support increasing the eligibility threshold at 200% of the federal poverty line, but progress is progress, and we applaud you for prioritizing Fair Fares in this budget. As we at the MTA look for ways to curb fare evasion, the first step should be to ensure that anyone who cannot truly afford the fare, that help is available. We offer discounts for disabled and elderly customers, but the city's Fair Fair programs has been a vital lifeline for those who qualify. We've begun piloting Fair Fair staff, or inviting Fair Fair staff, to attend my biweekly transit talks, and we're also piloting some satellite office hours with Fair Fares at our new customer service centers. I'm proud to share that the Department of Buses and the MTA customer team have been busy in the streets over the last two weeks, engaging directly with bus customers, meeting with over 25,000 riders at bus stops, and sharing information on how to ride transit for reduced fares, through the Reduced Fare or Fair Fares program, along with the importance of fare compliance, and we are making progress on our commitment to reduce fare evasion. A huge thank you to the members of my Eagle team, who are critical to supporting this historic expansion of bus fare payment. We need an all-hands deck for this watershed moment for mass transit in the region. We're determined to deliver for New Yorkers. Again, thank you for having me and happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for your presence today. We'll jump right into some of the questions. I want to start with congestion pricing, implementation, and funding. What is the current timeline for the implementation of congestion pricing, and what steps have been taken to date?
I'll give some, maybe some broad, and then ask my colleague, Dr. Allison DiSerenio, to mention. As mentioned, you know, the statute, or the statute is pretty clear. Once we receive the federal Fonzie, if you will, then it's to the six-appointed representatives on the Traffic Mobility Review Board to consider, among other things, exemptions, as you mentioned, and the implementation of this. As I also mentioned in my testimony, we actually are starting to implement the infrastructure or install the infrastructure, so when that process is complete, we'll be able to flip the switch, if you will. But there's still a process to be had. I'll let Dr. Sereno maybe comment on a little more.
Thank you, Rich, and thank you, council members. Yes, as Rich explained, we received our finding of no significant impact on the environmental assessment in June of 2023, recently. We subsequently began working with the vendor responsible for construction, who has already begun to finalize the system design and to begin installation of the toll system and infrastructure around the Central Business District. So some of you may have seen some of what we call poles and mast arms. They look a lot like the regular traffic signal and light signal poles and mast arms that you see around the city already, but you'll notice slightly different equipment hanging off. The vendor has up to 310 days from that June date to finish the design, finish the installation and construction, and the testing of the system before it goes live. As Rich mentioned, the Traffic Mobility Review Board has begun their meetings so that they can develop their recommendations. Importantly, as part of this process, after we go through the TMRB process, there will be a formal process with the Board for the state administrative procedure process, which includes additional hearings at that time. And subsequent to that, by statute, we have a 30-day required period of testing to ensure that everything is working smoothly, and we also have a 60-day requirement for additional outreach and communication beyond what we've already done and we continue to do, to ensure that everybody understands how this is going to actually run, what they need to do as they come in and out of the Central Business District. Finally, just want to also make clear for folks, at the tail end of it, after "go live", there is also a required 60-day period where we sort of let people learn how to use it before we address anybody who hasn't paid appropriately or on time. So it gives a little bit of time for people to learn.
So with the infrastructure being installed already, like what is that, what does that coordination with the city look like? Has there been coordination with the city?
Yes, we've been coordinating with the city since the initial legislation was passed. Within 60 days, we signed a memorandum of understanding with City Department of Transportation. They are heavily involved with us on the infrastructure and have been all along. That includes the design pieces, that includes the locations, that includes everything that we continue to do now in terms of where we're going to be locating the infrastructure and when it is happening, when it is actually going in. We also, through my colleague Will here, have been ensuring that the different community groups are aware as infrastructure starts to go up in their area.
Would I be able to get a copy of, and the committee get a copy of the MOU?
Yeah, in fact, it's actually in the final EA, but we can send, we're with Will to get that to you.
That'd be great to pull out. And is there a point person or a team at the MTA that's specifically tasked with coordinating with the, with the city?
Chair, that would be me and my team.
Okay.
And we've been communicating with council members in the Central Business District as infrastructure is going out. As Dr. DiSerenio pointed out, the timeline is dictated by DOT permits, so intimately involved, and we've been sending out a weekly look ahead to the community so that they know what's coming and that there's point of contact, there's information available with the workforce out there if members of the public have questions. We're trying to be as clear as possible.
And what is the role of the Department of Transportation as you are in this implementation phase?
Allison, you want to take that?
Certainly. Again, they've been actually involved from the get-go. They're actually a co-project sponsor on the environmental review. They are responsible, along with us and New York State Department of Transportation, which was the other co-project team member. They, all three agencies are responsible for different aspects of the mitigation that will be implemented as part of our findings from the final environmental assessment, and we work very closely with them, as I mentioned, as we go out to the different communities to ensure that everybody understands what is happening.
That's interesting information, because my, what I've been, what's been shared with me is that the city looks at the MTA as the one of having the full authority, so being defined as a co-project sponsor is, is interesting. So will the MTA prioritize capital spending on servicing mass transit deserts whose residents disproportionately bear the burden of congestion pricing?
Well, I think the answer is we're going to be prioritizing, you know, transit investments across the five boroughs and beyond, for sure. I can tell you that one thing that continues to concern me, running an agency, an organization that was built in part in 1904, that there's a lot of investment we need to make in things that, you know, everybody in this room, we don't see on a day-to-day basis, whether it's power, fan rooms, communication. Certainly, we're going to be spending a lot of money as part of this on our ADA accessibility program, which, you know, seeks to get to 95% accessibility on our subways in the next 30 years. So suffice to say, there are a lot of investments we need to make across, across New York City Transit, and of course, bridges and tunnels and the railroads, but as I mentioned, there's a lot of our investment that will help those folks in transit deserts and in other places across the city, for sure.
I just want to add to that, as we had you stand with us in an event the other day announcing a far-rockaway ticket. So beyond capital infrastructure, there's policy goals that we can work towards, and that was a joint goal identified in the new New York panel between the governor and the mayor, to make railroads more affordable in New York City. That's been a priority for Chairman Lieber as well. We don't always accept the term of our transit desert. Often, people are referring to rail deserts, which is fair, because the subway does not go everywhere in the five boroughs, but there are communities where we have railroad access that has previously been unaffordable, for people to say the least. So we have incrementally made that more affordable, taking what was a weekend-only city ticket program. We moved it to a seven-day-a-week pilot program in the off-peak, and we are now proud to announce that, starting next week, you're going to see what we call universal city ticket with a peak ticket price and an off-peak ticket price, but that's going to make the commuter railroads much more affordable and approachable for many communities that previously didn't see them as an affordable option.
So I will say I'm a bit concerned with the response in terms of, like, looking at it in terms from a five-borough perspective. So when you think, when I talk about equity, right, it's not everyone starting from the same vantage point, because there are communities that have been left behind for a long time, so it's being able to allow them to catch up and then being able to jump leaps and bounds together. And so all along, the MTA has shared that with congestion pricing, this money would be prioritized for transportation deserts. And so I'm very, like, zeroed in laser-focused on what that could look like and what that will look like, because congestion pricing can't just solely be about revenue being generated. It has to also be about how communities that are marginalized are going to be, you know, taken into account with this as well.
I think it's a fair point you're raising, and I just want to point out, specifically, let's talk about Southeast Queens. So for almost 30 years, that community was promised a New Jamaica Bus Depot. This capital program, the 2020-
That's already paid for. That doesn't count.
No, no, but, Madam Chair, that's being paid for by revenues in this capital program, which will ultimately be supported by congestion pricing. Hollis Station, other priorities that you've raised, and we have examples around the city that we're happy to provide offline, but I do want to emphasize that there are major investments being made in the outer boroughs that have been long overdue and asked for by your community that will be supported by congestion pricing revenues.
So which capital projects does the MTA anticipate spending the money collected from congestion pricing?
I think, again, as Will said, that the money collected is supporting the 2024 capital plan, so the capital plan we're currently, we're currently in, you know, it's expected- Capital Plan, so the capital plan we're currently, we're currently in, you know, it's expected to raise about $1 billion, which should be able, for us to be able to leverage $15 billion in capital spend, again, across the five boroughs. So that's, you know, that, that's what it's designed to do, is to pay for that current plan, which, you know, as mentioned, again, at least for New York City Transit, almost $2.5 billion in ADA upgrades. We've, we've purchased the R211 cars, as you know, Chair, those go through, you know, your district. And as I made the joke, they're replacing the AARP cars we have, the 50-year-old cars. There's a whole host of other projects, signal upgrades. I think, if you haven't been down to the City Hall Signal Room, I'm happy to take you there on a tour. A few weeks ago, I did, and the signal components were literally stalled in the 1950s, if you can imagine that. It's going to really, you know, be focused on both state-of-good repair and for, hopefully in the future, to allow us to expand services. We are in some key locations, as I mentioned in my testimony.
So when I think about-
I should also mention, too, I'm sorry, one other important point, because this will be across all five boroughs over the next, you know, 16 years, 17 years, which is our commitment to go to zero emission bus. You know, I think the, the public advocate mentioned earlier about air quality in some boroughs, you know, in some, you know, neighborhoods in particular that have been, you know, left behind. I couldn't agree more. And I think for us to be able to find ways to deliver, you know, continued bus service, but that's not adding to negative air quality is key. And so, as you, as you know, we have a pretty aggressive plan to go to zero emissions bus, largely electric. We're also going to be testing hydrogen as well. But that will be across the five boroughs over the coming, you know, decade and a half.
Will there be, like, service enhancements? So for example, I know, like, some of my colleagues in, in my neck of the woods have shared, for example, like, the A-Train. There are significantly more A-Train's that go to Lefers compared to Far Rockaway, a growing community in, in the Rockaways. Will there be increase in A-services, A-Train services, like, towards the Rockaways? We are in the midst of the bus redesign, and at some point, I do want to have a few questions on the best, the status of the bus redesigns. But with the bus redesign proposals that we've seen, there are bus stops that are being taken away. And so in communities that are dependent, like, when you look at Councilwoman Lee's district, for example, which has no train, no rail, just buses, or you look in, in Canarsie and communities like Councilmember Narcissa's district that rely on buses, how, how is this congestion pricing helping to get those New Yorkers to where they need to go?
I, in a number of ways. I mean, congestion pricing as a general matter will reduce congestion in our streets, which will help speed up our buses. There's no question, no question about, about that. And the congestion pricing itself, you know, again, as a capital, you know, as a way to raise capital dollars, will allow us to purchase those electric buses, I mentioned, but also to retrofit the 20, I think, seven depots, bus depots, we have across the five boroughs for charging stations as well, right? So there's a lot of infrastructure, sort of back of house, if you will, that's required to support, to support that change. So, again, we're excited about that, but, I mean, I saw it front earlier in saying that faster bus service, cleaner air, and safer streets is what congestion pricing is going to deliver.
And you mentioned signal upgrades a few times. How long will that project take, and what lines would it be along?
So eventually, you know, the expectation is over all lines, but right now, we're rolling it out across a few lines. You know, the idea is to replicate what we have, particularly on the Seven Line now, right? So the Seven Line has fully deployed CBTC, Communication-Based Train Control, and it is our best-performing line, it's our highest customer satisfaction, and it allows us to run really tight headways. So at rush hour, we're running two- to three-minute service, because we have a modern signal system. The capital plan does call for, you know, not exactly the amount, but it's over $1 billion in, in CBTC, certainly on Sixth Ave. But the goal is to continue to put out projects. The challenge we have is balancing the need to provide service on those lines while rolling out CBTC. So, you know, you do see frequently on the weekends and nights, impacts to customers, some service changes, because that's typically when we get all that work done. So retire the legacy signal system and bring a new, modern system. That's, again, safe and allows us to run, you know, more frequent service potentially in the future.
The city's Vision Zero goal is to bring traffic fatalities on the city's streets to zero. Is the MTA working with the Department of Transportation to incorporate complete street treatments for the congestion pricing entry points to ensure our streets are designed to enable safe use and support mobility for all New Yorkers?
In, in general, the answer is yes. I mean, as Dr. DiSarino pointed out, not just on congestion pricing, but anything relating to our bus planning operations, the city's implementation of Vision Zero, there is an all-time partnership under this mayor, our administration, and the governor on coordination between MTA and DOT.
So in the design and everything that's already being taken into account?
Regular conversations between our planners, their planners, you know, it, it's a very unique piece of MTA and DOT interoperability, where we operate a bus system on their streets, and, and we do so in some instances under contract with the city. But yes, absolutely.
And just going back to the earlier question around the infrastructure that's already being installed, how many cameras will be installed as a part of the tolling program? And where will the cameras be placed?
I don't have the exact number of cameras offhand, and I'll explain why in a moment that we can get that for you. There are 120, what we call detection points, that will be around the Central Business District, or in some cases, within. The vast majority of them, again, recognizing that it was important to us to understand this as an urban environment, and to your earlier comment on safety, we didn't want additional clutter. We don't want thing, you know, more out there than we absolutely need. So there'll be 120 detection points. A good number of them, I think it's roughly 35 of them, are on current infrastructure. Wherever we can locate the toll system on current infrastructure, like walkways over the roadways, or sign structures that are already there, we're going to do that. The remainder, as I mentioned, are poles and mast arms, akin to what you already see out there. In terms of the number, each of those poles or mast arms, depending upon the size of the roadway, will have a different number of, or a different number of toll system equipment components on it. Importantly, this is not going to be like what some of you may be familiar with, if you've driven some of our bridges or tunnels, where you see the toll system, and you see the cameras, and you see the EZ Pass readers, and you see all the different pieces. Again, to make this visually more appealing, and in essence, almost make it fade away, we have a single cluster housing for all of that. So what you're going to see, for example, on a one-lane road, you're going to see just that single cluster potentially, possibly two, depending upon whether there are bike lanes or bus lanes, right? And all of it is housed inside that. On, one last piece I want to point out, on the FDR Drive and the West Side Highway, instead of putting infrastructure at every single entry and exit, which would have meant upwards of roughly 90 more locations, 90 more poles or mast arms or other places we needed this infrastructure, instead, we're going to be using an approach that uses an algorithm. It allowed us to reduce the number of points where we needed infrastructure and toll system equipment from that roughly 100-something all the way down to roughly somewhere around 15 combined. What that means is that as vehicles come in on those excluded roadways, they will be identified through the system, either through their EZ Pass or the camera or combination. And there'll be an algorithm that determines how is traffic flowing. So, for example, if it should be about 10 minutes to get to that next point, the system will be looking for that vehicle. And if in about 10 minutes it sees them, it'll be like, okay, they're still on that excluded roadway, they don't get a charge. As long as they continue to see them all the way around, that vehicle would not be charged. If at some point, they don't see them, and then they don't see them again, right, we want to make sure that it's not just because of something was blocking something else, that will be built in, and ultimately, then the charge would be made, because we would know that they had entered the district.
And how much does the MTA expect camera installations to cost?
It's not specific to the cameras. Again, it's the cameras' part of the overall toll system.
So how much is that contract worth?
And so the overall contract, it's a design, build, operate, maintain contract. So it has both the design-build portion and the operation and maintenance portion, and it's about, it's somewhere just over $500 million. And it's roughly, not quite, but roughly split between the two.
And is this a recurring $500 million, or does that go down, because once it's already designed and built?
That's all-inclusive. So that includes that initial piece, which is about half of that, roughly, to do the installation, and, you know, the design, the development, the testing, and the installation. And then the second portion of that, over the period of time, is for the ongoing operations and maintenance of the system.
How long is that maintenance for?
I have to take a look. If I recall, it's about six years, once this is installed, but we can get back to you with the exact number on that. It's been a while since I looked at that part.
So the $500 million, you believe, is for six years?
If you put it all together, yes, though it doesn't quite work that way, but we can actually, we can delineate that for you if necessary, if you'd like.
Okay. I'd like to talk about congestion pricing exemptions. Has the MTA developed any criteria for thinking about requested exemptions to the congestion pricing scheme?
The legislation requires that the Traffic Mobility Review Board develop a recommendation for the toll syst, for the tolling structure. It requires them to look at the potential for credits, discounts, or exemptions. Our role as part of the final EA and the EA process was to explore the different types of things that could be out there and create sort of an envelope of different types of scenarios that would allow the TMRB to have some flexibility as they look across what they want to consider for a recommendation. As to the actual exemptions, discounts, or credits, there are two that are required in the legislation. There's the one for vehicles transporting persons with disabilities, and the one for emergency vehicles. Again, I should just specify, they're qualifying and authorized. The, as a result of the environmental review process, we have a discount plan that we have committed to for low-income drivers. And then beyond that, what we have ensured is, through our comment period, we received comments requesting 122 different types of exemptions or discounts. They ranged from vehicle types to locations, right? We had, you know, all of people living in this area, or all the people living in that area, all this type of vehicle, all that type of vehicle, also types of trips, right? And also types of workers, among others, right? So there were exemption requests for different types of employed individuals. We also had, importantly, 55 different types of requests to not provide exemptions, discounts, or credits. So for those where we were, just as an example, we were asked to discount or provide exemptions for people from residing in certain locations. We also got requests to not exempt people residing in those same types of locations. All of that is detailed in our final EA, and we can certainly provide you with the lists themselves as well.
How will the MTA implement exemptions for vehicles carrying individuals with disabilities? Will individuals need to apply ahead of time for exemption?
So, again, just to specify, the legislation requires the exemption for vehicles transporting persons with disabilities. What we've detailed in the final environmental assessment is the, in essence, those vehicles that would qualify would be vehicles that have government-issued disability license plates. We would also have organizations, private or public, that transport persons with disabilities, including AAR, accessory ride, and including the broker vehicles that are used for accessory ride when they are making those types of trips. In terms of how the organizations will apply, we're still finalizing the operating procedures and the credentialing that will be required, but we envision somewhere at least 60 days prior, if not a bit more, to start putting out the word, have all the forms, have everything available, so that people can start to sign up.
And will that include, like, the FHVs that will be transporting individuals that have disabilities as well?
When they're working through the service for AAR, yes.
Has the MTA considered exemptions for individuals using emergency medical facilities in the CBD? There are a number of hospitals with emergency rooms, specialized services, pediatric emergency rooms, urgent centers. Is the MTA concerned that congestion pricing will deter people out of the CBD from using those medical facilities? So for example, NYU is in the CBD and provides a lot of specialized care there as well. And so has the MTA explored potential exemptions in those instances? Because I know in London, they have a medical exemption that exists in their program.
So, so a few things, again, the TMRB holds the responsibility at this point for making the recommendations. We're not weighing in one way or the other. With respect to the medical facilities, we are aware that there are a number of medical facilities. I know that Sloan Kettering also has some facilities, as well as some of the other hospitals down in the Central Business District. We did not find an adverse finding for this group, but importantly, we are aware of the-
I'm sorry, I missed the part of that. You said you did not find an adverse finding for which group?
For, in terms of people who are trying to get medical attention in the, in the-
How did you come to that?
So we've, we looked at, in essence, reviewed how people get to these facilities. Yes, some people drive, a lot of people still take transit, a lot of people take taxis and FHVs. We have, for those who are accessing medical care, who are low income, they, they will have that low-income discount. There are also different programs in terms of tax reductions, in terms of Medicare or Medicaid payments to help people to access medical facilities. Importantly, with respect to London, London also has a very different system, because they have a national system for their health care. So it's a very different way of addressing those who need to get health care in general. So it's, it's not like-
No, it shows a commitment to people who need access to health care. I mean, we pay for our health care exorbitant amounts, and then now to add on, get it, how we get there, I mean, it's, to me, I think it's telling of how we view, you know, that population.
I just want to add again that we didn't express position either way. The Traffic Mobility Review Board has a statutory obligation to consider these questions that you're asking, so I just want to state, for the record, we're not going to answer questions beyond the statutorily-defined exemptions today. And shameless plug, the TMRB will be meeting today at 3 o'clock.
I hope they're listening today.
Well, they've been listening to a lot of comments. Dr. DiSarino, you want to talk about the number of comments that we received through the public outreach process, real quickly?
Yes, certainly. So in our early outreach, we had nine, so the early outreach was with, before we issued the document, we had 19 public sessions. There were 10 generalized sessions, and then nine sessions focused specifically on environmental justice communities. At those early outreach sessions, we had roughly 400 speakers, and we received over 7,300 comments. We left the meetings, we, we did the meetings virtually, I'll come back to that in a moment, and we left them online, they're still online for people to take a look at. And as of December of 2022, in addition to all of those who streamed live as we were doing the meetings, there've been 18,000, over 18,000 views as of December. For the outreach, to make sure that people were aware of what was going on, we posted notices in over 40 newspapers throughout 28 counties of the region, New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut. We had posters in eight languages and English, so nine languages over, in total, that were posted in every single subway station, every single Metro North and Long Island Railroad Station, and in all of our buses, so that everybody could see what was going on. We also had postcards issued, we worked with the TLC to issue postcards to the TLC drivers, and we also sent postcards to every resident that was five blocks north and five blocks south, as well as along 60th Street, to ensure that people were aware that this was going on. Of course, we also had press coverage, and we used our press releases, and we created a list serve as well. Anybody could sign up and say they wanted to be part of this via our website, which was also live and had that information. We, as part of that early outreach session or series, we also held meetings with, we, we developed and held meetings with an EJ, Environmental Justice Technical Advisory Group. These are individuals throughout all three states who specifically work on environmental justice issues. They were invited to participate. And we held meetings with the government agencies. They were all invited, again, throughout the 28 counties. That was our early outreach. After we issued the document for public review, we had our formal comment period, which included six hearings. Some of you, I know, were part of them. And for those of you who were not aware, some of those meetings went well, well into the early morning hours. They were hours and hours long. We had over 550 speakers- We had over 550 speakers, over 11,000 views subsequently, in addition to those again who were streaming at the actual time. All told, we received over 70 or roughly 70,000 submissions. That was 55,000 form submissions and about 14,000 individual submissions. Those individual submissions had multiple comments, so it was over 22,000 comments, all of which, each and every one of which has been responded to and was part of the final environmental assessment that was issued. During that period and at the, later in the early outreach, we also had an environmental justice stakeholder working group. So in addition to the technical advisory group that we invited, we wanted to give people an opportunity to self-identify and become part of a smaller group for meaningful engagement. And that group was brought together after the initial announcements because we wanted people to have time to find out about it and ask to be part or nominate someone else to be part of it. So we held those meetings as well.
Thank you for that. Public and private buses help alleviate congestion by reducing individual car usage. Has there been any discussion of creating exemptions for such buses, commuter vans, car pools?
I mean, again, I think I would just say it's, all the exemptions are up to the TRMB, so, you know--
But to date, has any conversation happened around it?
Not that I'm aware of, Chair, no. I mean, again, there'll be conversations today at 3 o'clock with the TRMB, so encourage that conversation to happen there.
Similarly, the MTA assesses other tolls on commercial trucks on a per axle basis. Has it been considered in terms of doing the same on trucks that enter the CBD?
Same answer. Again, the exemptions are the statutory, you know, bailiwick of the TRMB, so.
Okay, so it hasn't been discussed to date yet?
Again, go ahead.
I want to clarify, depending on how you're referring to being discussed, I don't think there's an exemption that someone could conceive that has not been presented for the TMRB--
Has it been considered?
That body is meeting now. We are not speaking on their behalf. They're meeting again at 3 o'clock today and we would invite the council to tune into that proceeding.
Lower-income driver discounts, since we know that that is included, we'll go to that then. The MTA, well, before I pivot to that, another thing. In terms of exemptions and conversations that have been had yet, in terms of the yellow taxi cab and this, I would love to have had the TLC here for this piece as well. I'm interested in understanding how we are looking at, for example, the yellow taxis in particular because the city, as you know, has put a lot of money into trying to bail out an industry that has, you know, been negatively impacted, you know, through COVID, through, you know, a number of other different factors. And they already pay a congestion tax. Does this propose, or this plan being implemented, does it look to add an additional tax onto the yellow cabs? Is there any type of relief that is being considered for the yellow taxi cabs as well?
So the final EA found that there would be no adverse effect on the taxis or FHVs if they were not told more than once per day. So there is a commitment in the final EA to not toll these vehicles more than once per day. With that said, the TMRB by legislation is required to develop a plan for taxis and FHVs. And so again, anything different than what's in that final commitment will be discussed by the TMRB.
And so the, the TMRB, they still have the ability, if they so choose, to create an exemption for the taxis as well?
It is something they're allowed to consider.
Okay. Excuse me, let's keep, we've been doing real good. Let's keep order. We'd like to keep everybody in the room. So going to the lower-income driver discount, the MTA has committed to providing lower-income drivers a discount for the congestion pricing toll. How will drivers qualify for this discount?
So it's similar with some of the other exemptions, the ones that are required by statute. We're finalizing the procedures and the processes at this point, but we envision that there will be a credentialing process where people will need to be able to demonstrate that they do fall into the group that would be considered for the low-income discount. They'll have to provide the credentials regarding the vehicle, the registration, much like we do today. And they will ultimately have a plan associated with their EZ Pass account. They will have to use EZ Pass for it. That's pretty typical of what we do for any type of planned discounts. And again, we'll ensure that--
So if someone doesn't have an EZ Pass, they wouldn't qualify for it?
In order to have the plans, you would have to have EZ Pass. But we are also reducing, one of the things that we're aware of is that one of the barriers for some customers to getting that EZ Pass is the EZ Pass tag fee. It's a deposit that is reimbursed later, but that can be a problem for certain people. So we are actually going to be doing away with that as part of our commitments. And we will, in essence, help people to get the EZ Pass. For those who cannot or feel they're uncomfortable with prepaying, which is what many people do by putting the credit card on, TBTA has many years now where we have offered a sort of pay-as-you-go plan. And so they would be eligible for that as well. So they would not necessarily have to lay the money out. There would be no tag fee. Our customer service representatives will help them get signed up and then they'll have the EZ Pass with that plan--
I'm gonna try not to go down the EZ Pass path because there's a lot of concerns in terms of, you know, the billing and Rockaway in particular. I'm sure Assemblywoman Pfeffer-Motto has shared concerns through the years in terms of the reimbursement program that happens and, and the hardship it places on people, but--
If I can interject for a second, and we have a lengthy history with your office and the Assemblywoman's office, those that have an EZ count, EZ Pass account in good standing do not have problems with the Rockaway Resident Rebate or Staten Island Resident Rebate. That's one of the beauties of EZ Pass and our Toll NY app, which everybody should be using.
I'm not gonna go down that path, but--
Anytime.
Okay, I'm gonna stick to congestion today. But I will welcome the MTA back to have a whole hearing on that piece. Will drivers be able to apply for, before congestion pricing toll goes into effect for this low-income driver discount?
Absolutely. Again, our plan is at the very least, that 60-day outreach period that's required to have in advance of the go-live period. And once we have the procedures and the processes and the documentation developed, we'll determine what the appropriate time is to get the word out, have the outreach, make sure people know how to sign up and walk them through it.
And do you think that you'll be able to process this within 60 days, these applications?
Yes. Or whatever, like as I said, we will determine how much time is needed. At the minimum, it will be the 60 days.
And how is the MTA going to make sure that individuals are aware of this discounted program?
That'll be part of our outreach, which obviously is already started, right? By making sure that people are aware and they have the, they can access the document, but we will have a formal outreach campaign to ensure that people are aware.
Which, again, that's required by the state law that enabled the program.
What does the outreach look, look like? Because I know I don't live in the CBD, but I haven't like necessarily received anything in the mail about it. I haven't really seen any like advertising around it. So what does the outreach?
As, as we're moving towards that part of the process, there's a reason you haven't seen it because we're not there yet. But as we do with each phase, when we got to infrastructure installation, we begin engaging with the community boards, the business improvement districts, the local elected officials. We'll get down to the customer level using our EZ Pass database, where we have a good way to communicate with our customers through tolls by mail. We'll exhaust every option that we have to make sure that we require the statute and go beyond. It's in our best interest that we do.
And I'd like to like recommend like looking at ethnic media, for example. I don't think government like leverages them enough, the hyper-local outlets, having a street team, you know, going to doors.
Dr. DeSerrino covered it. This outreach for this program has gone above and beyond anything that the MTA has ever conceived previously. The outreach area here was not our 12 counties that we serve. It was the 28 counties that were looked at through the environmental assessment. We had flyers in bus stops and thruway stops in New Jersey. We'll continue down this path of above and beyond outreach. We absolutely agree. And to get into communities that really need that attention. There were groups convened, environmental justice groups were consulted. We're gonna continue down that path.
Councilmember Brewer is here, so I'm interested to know if her district has received notification because I think she's in the CBD as well, in terms of the outreach that has happened to date. I want to move over to the future of the capital plan. The current MTA capital plan, 2020 to 2024, will expire next year. Has the MTA begun formulating the next capital plan?
Yeah, that's a very timely question. So following state law, October 1 of this year, we're required to produce what's known as our 20-year needs assessment. This is a more future-looking document that serves as the preceding document to our next capital program. So this October, we'll release that 20-year needs assessment. And then by October of 2024, we're required to submit our next 2025 to 2029 MTA capital program to the Capital Program Review Board, the CPRB, which the city has representation on.
And the current capital plan anticipated $15 billion in revenue from congestion pricing. As the MTA prepares for a new five-year capital plan, is it fair to assume that the MTA will anticipate collecting $15 billion from congestion pricing every five years?
No, as the statute dictates that fif, that it's $1 billion in revenue annually that will bond against for 15 billion. That is for the 2024 program. If there are proceeds beyond that, it can be spent on successor programs, but that's a different conversation that you're describing.
Okay. Fair increase. MTA's calendar 2024 preliminary plan assumes a 4% fare and a 5.5% toll increase. How will the MTA reassure New Yorkers paying more in fare, fares tolls and soon congestion tolls that this additional revenue will be spent effectively on infrastructure and service improvements?
So on the fare increase, taking a step back, you know, there was, I sort of saw a four-legged stool to help, you know, balance our budget. Obviously, the state and the city contributed to that. And there were two other things, you know, as part of the state budget to show our balanced budget of the next five years. One was, as J. Patel mentioned, you know, our work to save $400 million. New York City Transit bears $300 million of those dollars in efficiencies and operating savings without impacting service or our customers. And then the other was to begin reinstating the modest fare increase that occurs every couple of years. So we haven't had a toll, I haven't had a fare increase at New York City Transit at the base level in eight years, right? So the fare has been 275 since 2015. So we're increasing the base fare by 15 cents next week. But that was, again, contemplated as the overall budget, budget deal to, you know, to balance our budget. You know, in terms of assurances, you know, I often say we're looking for every nickel in the cushion, in our cushions all the time and, and looking at ways, again, where we're not impacting service. So everything from predictive maintenance is something that we're very focused on at New York City Transit before something breaks down, actually using technology to not only predict that it will break down, but then using artificial intelligence on that particular piece of equipment, a bus, for example, to predict where and how it will break down. We're the largest consumer of electricity, or one of the largest consumers of electricity in the state. We're looking at ways to improve our, our facilities, you know, in that regard. So I can certainly assure the public that we are working hard to be a more efficient organization. And, you know, it's, it's a constant improvement loop. I don't think you can ever rest with an organization as large as ours to find ways to, to improve how you're doing.
And I forgot to ask a question earlier on behalf of Deputy Speaker Ayala, who has some concerns about the impact the congestion tolling plan will have on East Harlem and the South Bronx. The asthma rates there are super high and cannot absorb more cars. She sent a letter asking what the plan to address this is and has not heard back. Is there any update on that?
Before I let Rich answer the concern at large, I don't recall that we've received that letter, so I'd ask that council staff follow up with that. That would be to my office, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But just specific to that, I mean, a couple of things. Obviously, Second Avenue Subway is a big part of our expansion. You know, we, I talked a lot about state of good repair and, you know, improving the system that we have today. But Second Avenue Subway will certainly be a huge benefit to those communities, you know, going up to 125th Street. And as I mentioned too, on the air quality piece, you know, we are moving, you know, quickly, or at least moving to make sure that our bus fleet will be zero emission over the next 10, 15 years. And again, you know, those communities bear, you have a number of bus depots, right? With, with diesel, with diesel engine fleets, we'll be going to zero emissions as well. So I think those are two very tangible benefits in terms of the capital investments, you know, that we're making.
You all mentioned during the testimony a $35 million investment in the fiscal year '24 state budget in subway service improvements. Could you go a little bit more granular in terms of where these improvements have taken place and where we can expect these improvements to take place in the future?
Sure. So in July, so the first weekend in July, we added service on the G, J, and M lines. So speeding up service every eight to nine minutes as opposed to what it was every 10 to 11 minutes. So we're shrinking the weekend headways there. This August, so this month, we're adding additional service on the C, N, and R lines. And again, doing both weekday, midday, I should say, service enhancements that shrink wait times from, you know, approximately every eight minutes from 10 minutes. And we've also added service, midday service on the 1 and the 6. So we've got some more to come. I won't make news today, but I will tell you that we are looking at, you know, how we think about adding service. It's a few different things, certainly crews, right? So it takes us about nine months to train a train operator, about two months for a conductor. So, you know, we're adding crews to accommodate some of this service cars. You know, as previously mentioned, making sure that, you know, our car equipment team has enough fleet availability to get cars out into the system and then balancing that with the work we have to do. So we targeted lines, in particular, the G, J, and M don't have, obviously we have some work going on in the M at the end of the month, but not major and long-term work. So we want to be able to run the service that we're advertising. And then, of course, as you mentioned, more to come on, on the bus side. While there was not a specific commitment in the budget, you know, we have typically added service to our bus service once we put out our bus redesigns as well. So I wanted to be clear that we're also thinking about our bus customers as well.
I didn't hear the E, or bless you, the E or, or A lines. So we hope we have some added service coming to those, especially the far Rockaway A.
Can, can I just address that, having been part of the budget conversations up in the state? Rich listed off, and again, there's a little bit more to come. The state legislature's focus, and this was a result, I want to give credit to the governor, the legislative leaders, our partners in advocacy, the Riders Alliance, PCAC, a whole slew of folks that really made sure that it wasn't just saving transit, but investing. We wanted realistic service increases that could be implemented. As Rich mentioned, there's ongoing work. Chair, you talked about the ongoing signaling modernization projects. We wanted to make sure that the service upgrades we were promising in the budget, that were going to be funded from it, were deliverable within a certain timeframe. So I've had colleagues that have overlapping territory with you on the state level that asked some of those same questions. There was rationale as to why, but it doesn't mean that you might not see something in the future.
Just to the A point, though, I want you to know, we are giving love to the A line in two ways. We have new cars coming, as you know, so the newest fleet, our R211s are being introduced on the A. We just introduced the fourth car, fourth train set this week and more to come. Those will be three times more reliable than the fleet we have on the A line now, which will be good news. And then I'm happy to, to brief you offline. We have targeted the ABC and D lines, which have been historically our underperforming lines for a number of reasons.
And F, too.
Yes, so we decided to do four, and then once we improve those, we'll keep moving. This is a continuous improvement process for us. But those four in particular, and we've seen fruits with a number of both personnel and management changes there, but also some track improvements as well. So we have seen an improvement in service, but again, on those lines, I will admit, we have a long way to go.
And what, like, what's the criteria that's being used to determine which lines would receive service improvement?
So the criteria, again, is, you know, do we have the capacity within the line itself? So for example, on the 7 line, we probably couldn't add any more rush hour service because we're running two-to-three-minute headways as an example. The G, J, and M, we did see, you know, nice ridership gains on the weekends, which is why we chose those. They don't interline as well, right? So as you know, the A and the C run on the same line. So, you know, if you are adding service on the A, it would impact the C, for example. And then lastly, as I mentioned, for lines that weren't having major construction work occurring, you know, those are the places that we focus because we could run the service, you know, that we're advertising. So, you know, more to come, obviously. We're gonna continue to watch ridership. We're gonna continue to train crews and see if there's service add opportunities. But I would say, you know, in an era where every other major system in America is-- system in America is cutting service, fiscal cliff, not hiring folks, you know, we're adding service, which again is a testament to your advocacy and the legislature and the governor's leadership to give us more resources to do that.
And thank you for that. And can you provide additional details on the timeline for improving the rolling stock? And is it a goal to eventually put more, our 211s across more lines?
That would be the goal. So, you know, we have an order of cars coming in now, as mentioned. I'll get you a timeline when those exactly will be implemented. I think that contract ends somewhere in the early 2025, but we'll get the exact number. You know, we've obviously, COVID and some other supply chain challenges have those cars delayed, but we were very successful with the testing we had with Kawasaki. The product has been very good, and we've gotten very good customer feedback. So the intent now is to be able to introduce new train sets, you know, approximately one every four to six weeks now. And as I said, we, without any fanfare announcement, we added our fourth train this week.
And while we're on, like, service improvement, accessibility, we had a reso that was added last minute about the Queens Link. And so I just wanted to ask one or two questions about the Queens Link as well. When we look at in terms of investments, and when you talk about congestion pricing and wanting to invest in, you know, transit infrastructure and options, what are, what is the MTA's position on Queens Link and doing a study, like a full study? Because I know there was, like, a mini-study done in the past, but, because I noticed if you're going to hit me, it will, but I want to know in terms of a comprehensive study, what is the MTA's position on that?
So, and I know you just acknowledged, we've had these conversations previously. A full-blown EIS at this point would not be warranted. So as you alluded to, and I talked about it earlier, we are engaged right now in our 20-year needs assessment process. As part of that, and to be very clear, when we advance any capital program, 80 to 90% of it has to be focused on state of good repair and normal replacement. State of good repair is the meat-and-potatoes work that keeps Rich's subway system running, keeps the buses rolling. We have to overhaul that rolling stock on a specific cycle, as you just alluded to. So so much of our capital program is focused to that, to keep the core function running, and it's, again, yielding phenomenal results as the system's functioning at an all-time high. But we know there's interest in more, in expanding the system and finding new ways to do it, both, you know, leveraging existing assets that we have and finding new places. So you talk about old right-of-ways, like the Rockaway Beach branch, or the Interboro Express, a priority that the governor has identified using a right-of-way that's owned predominantly by the Long Island Railroad. And so we're looking globally at all these. Part of the consolidated planning function at MTA following our state-mandated transformation has brought these long-term regional planning functions under one group, under Dr. Mike Schiffer at MTA Regional Planning and Construction and Development. The Queens Link, as you refer to it, or the Rockaway Beach Branch reactivation, as we call it, two different versions of it, a New York City Transit version or a Long Island Railroad reactivation, were the subject of a feasibility study back around, we released that back in about 2020, and is part of this comparative evaluation that we're moving forward with now. The results of that available capital dollars will determine next steps. But we have broken a pattern, or we're trying to break a pattern of, you know, studying for studying sake. When we advance an EIS like that, you know, as we just announced, that we're stepping into the environmental process for the Interboro, for instance, that's because it didn't have the same level of previous study that the Rockaway Beach branch has had. So we want to make sure that we're advancing projects to get them as shovel-ready as possible, if they're going to move forward, again, with the limited capacity and expansion capital dollars that we have in any plan.
And I'll just say, like, for the record, I know that there's been a lot of conversation about reactivating this line. I know there's conversation about open space also on the other end of it, which I support both. If it's feasible, I'm interested more in the feasibility first, which is the first step of it, as I've always said publicly. But I challenge the MTA to think innovatively in how we have greater transit equity and also still be able to have the open space. I think that there's a world where that could exist if there, you know, is the political will for it. And so I just challenge the MTA to be able to explore what those two worlds coming together could look like.
We always appreciate your challenges, Chair, first and foremost. And it's a good point. It's, so the asset that you're describing is owned by the city of New York. It's another example of the renewed and strengthened partnership between the administration and the MTA and the governor's office. The council and the administration put capital dollars towards that linear park that you're referring to in last year's city budget. Before doing so, the MTA was consulted about that, to make sure that there wouldn't be any, you know, fatal flaws to their design, and if we chose to use it for a transit purpose in the future. There will be ongoing conversations as that park space gets further developed. There are examples nationally and internationally where you do have that kind of interoperability of public space and an active right-of-way. You got to make sure it's a safe space. But we're at a point in our planning process where, again, what your resolution is calling for respectfully would be a little bit premature, but we are aware of your interest and the other elected officials and members of the community that have reached out to us in the past on this one.
And so I hope that the MTA is taking it seriously. And as you look towards your next plan that you'll be working towards, that it is in the thought process and on the front of the conversation as well.
It is publicly part of about two dozen capacity and expansion projects that are part of our comparative evaluation.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to go to elevators and accessibility. As you know, I'm a big ally of the disability community and wanting to make sure that we, is everything okay? Okay. In terms of the investments there, the capital plan includes $5.2 billion for new elevators and ramps at up to 66 stations, which averages $78.8 million per station. How many remaining MTA subway stations are in need of elevators?
Bluntly, a lot. You know, this is a 120-year-old system, and these stations were not designed, sadly, to be inclusive for customers who are disabled, or frankly, for those customers who might have large bags, strollers, et cetera. So, you know, our commitment, commitment that I'm particularly proud of, that we've made to make 95% of our system, our subway system, accessible by 2055, we have a long way to go. But we've completed three stations so far this year, with another nine left to be opened in 2023. And as you mentioned, Chair, one of the big pieces of the 2020 to 2024 capital plan is making our subway system accessible. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, for sure. But it's a commitment that, you know, Chair Lieber personally and, you know, the MTA have made, one that, as I've mentioned to you before in other hearings, while transit is not technically responsible for the construction, that is my colleague Jamie Torres Springer and his team, we will be responsible for oversight and maintenance, which we also take very seriously. You know, we want to have as an inclusive system as we possibly can on the subway network, for sure. But again, as you mentioned, I know for some, congestion pricing and other ways to raise revenue aren't always popular, but this is exactly what it's funding, an accessible subway system.
Thank you. And what is the current average cost for the MTA to install an elevator and subway station? I understand that the costs are often high, and just wanting to understand what contributes to that and how we compare it to other transit systems?
Yeah, I mean, we can get you some details. Having run a different transit system 10, you know, 10 years ago now, in a similar city, which was an older city that had built an infrastructure, you know, these structures are not, you know, inexpensive, to say the least. And in particular, these are typically not just one elevator. It's usually multiple elevators. So for a, you know, subway station underground, for example, you might have to go to a mezzanine and then a second elevator from a mezzanine down to the platform. There are other stations where, when we can, we want redundancy, right? So it might not be one elevator. It actually might be four elevators. So, you know, happy to get you the detail, but I do know that the construction and development team have worked very hard at looking at ways to reduce costs, which is why they've been doing design-build packages, for example. And, you know, again, getting the work done, but in the most efficient manner as possible.
I just want to point out the council played an important role in helping us bring the cost of elevator construction down. One of the more costly pieces of it is often utility relocation, when we're building on the sidewalk in particular. So when we work together on the zoning for accessibility initiative that requires developers who are going to do development within a certain proximity to a subway or railroad station, at this point, they have to come and talk to the MTA and say, hey, do you need an easement? And if we're able to tuck an elevator into their building proper, that oftentimes saves us millions of dollars in utility relocation. So again, a deep gratitude to the council for your leadership on that one and the assistance. And then, as President Davy mentioned, there's more going into this. If you look at our capital program and how we're issuing the RFPs for these elevator projects and ADA projects, we're not doing them one at a time anymore. The team at C and D under Jamie Torres Springer and Tim Mulligan are working on bundling these projects, trying to realize efficiencies, holding contractors accountable. We're seeing great results through that design-build process, and we'll follow up with more specifics after the fact.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize that we've been joined by a couple of other members, including Councilmember Marte and Palladino, and Narcisse. And Councilmember Rivera is online. Next, we'll go to questions from my colleagues, which we will start with Councilmember Ari Kagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this opportunity. So I would like to state for the record that overwhelming majority of my constituents in South Brooklyn strongly oppose this new congestion pricing plan as a new burden on South Brooklyn residents and businesses. I also would like to say that with new revenue streaming from higher taxes, fares, and tolls, additional state and city subsidies, why do we even need to squeeze New Yorkers even more? And also, I would like to say, you mentioned a lot of improvements. I would say, again, I represent South Brooklyn, and even small things, like last year, I talked about closed bathroom at the subway station, Coney Island, Still Village Avenue. It's still closed today. I was yesterday, it was closed, so it's closing. Why, it's not multiple billion dollars.
It may have been closed for cleaning, but that station, that's actually open. It may have been closed for cleaning, Councilmember, but I'm pretty sure that that bathroom.
I will post again picture tomorrow. It's closed. People complained to me. It's one of the busiest stations in New York City. And of course, this is a small thing, but for people, it's a very big thing.
Yeah, for sure.
But like, on a major scale for South Brooklyn, we still don't have F-Train Express from Coney Island to Manhattan. Bus X29 Express doesn't exist again. And this so-called MTA bus redesign plan, basically, it's a more proposed cuts of service for bus lanes. And of course, no elevator or escalator on Neptune Avenue F-Train Station. And you're talking about, you mentioned 2055 in your speech. So like, I hope I will survive till the day when I will see more accessible subway stations in my area. So that's why I like, I don't understand, we're giving more and more money to MTA and less and less service. That's what I don't understand.
I just want to state for the record, the subway, Neptune Avenue is in this current capital program. It's yet to be awarded, but it is in this capital program.
What year?
We'll get back to you on that, but it's in this plan. It is committed in this capital program.
Still Avenue Bathroom opened on April 17, but I'll find out why it was closed yesterday.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Davy, it was good to see you and your team. Earlier in your testimony at the start of the hearing, you know, Ms. Patel talked about all the additional revenues that are coming the MTA's way, the improved state of fiscal health, and your own increased efforts in terms of fare evasion, which I know has been a huge revenue-creating issue for the agency. And I'm just wondering more than I usually do about why we're even doing this congestion pricing plan, given that it's meant to get us out of a hole that the MTA was in, and yet now things seem to be improving, even though we're not yet collecting those charges. But really, what I want to get into is, you know, a lot of folks are already paying significant toll burdens, even before congestion pricing comes into effect. My constituents, if they take the Varizano to the Hugh Carey into the city and then back again, have a daily toll burden of about $19.38 a day. That's inclusive of the Staten Island resident discount. For those that take the Port Authority crossings and go through New Jersey, it's about $22.13 a day. Again, even with resident discounts of the Port Authority crossings. And I recognize that revenue doesn't come to you. But that's a lot per day, and you're talking about adding $24 on top of that, right? That's, that's of concern to me when it's not yet clear to me whether or not there's going to be any accounting for deductions for tolls already paid by other New Yorkers. So I guess I understand you're talking a lot about the committee that's meeting early, you know, later today, and that that's going to be a responsibility that they have to kind of suss out. But it's deeply concerning to me that folks who already have a significant toll burden will have to pay more. And we're talking a lot about, oh, what folks you're going to get in terms of investments in the existing system, maybe expansions of the system, even if we're talking about buses, which primarily serve the communities I represent. Most folks don't see that as a sufficient trade-off. They just don't want to pay more. And so I'd love for you to kind of talk a little bit about that and what your answer might be.
Sure. No, I certainly understand your point. You know, a couple of things. I mean, certainly, as I said, you know, well, maybe just to get a step back, like congestion pricing is going to help our capital plan, right? The fare increase was a focus on our operations, right, as was the state and the city's contributions, and our effort to eliminate $400 million or find efficiencies in our own budget that don't impact service, right? So congestion pricing is for the capital issues. I mean, that I think, you know, we often hear from, and rightfully so, members of this council about the investments we need to make in our capital program to run better service, more service. So that's what it's going to. You know, all I can say for Staten Island is that, you know, we continue to look for ways to invest in public transportation as well. So, you know, we're trying to look at all five boroughs for opportunities to make investments, and we are, we are there as well.
I'll just close very quickly. It's not transit investments they're concerned about. It's they're going to be paying more out of their pocket, and they're already paying more, which can't be said for everybody who drives into the system. And frankly, I don't want those folks to pay more either. But that's going to have to be an accommodation that's made moving forward with this, is that there has to be an acknowledgement that people around this city are already paying tolls to enter Manhattan, their own city, and it's unfair to ask them to do more. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Please. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Chair. This is, to me, congestion pricing, and it's most of my constituents, is a giant tax scam. It is nothing more than that, and here's why. You did an environmental assessment study, not an environmental impact study. An environmental impact study is very complete. An assessment study is a rubber stamp, only when you want to just go through the motions. How did you all get here today? Did you get, take the subway? I don't think so.
We, we.
Every, listen, every, every time this happens, this is going to have the middle class, the result of this congestion pricing, the middle class will move out of this city. We're not back from the pandemic. Manhattan is not back. Most people who I know go to work, they don't work five days a week anymore. My wife, who's Asian-American, will not take the subway because of all the incidents, especially targeting Asian-Americans. She has to take the express bus. And guess what? You pay for the privilege, almost $7 now. It's going to be $7. And it stops running, her stop, at 7:00 PM in Manhattan. So if she has to work late, which she does, she has to now arrange other transportation, not the subway. Subway's not safe. The, and by the way, she's, she could get a senior discount, but they don't offer that on the express bus. Isn't this wonderful? So we're in a rail desert, transportation desert. We pay for limited service on the buses. To get to Manhattan, she would have to take two trains and a bus, all right? So she, she has to take the express bus because she wants to feel safe, all right? She's a woman who sometimes the Asian-Americans are targeted. We know that in the subways. You know it. So by doing this, right now, not coming out of the pandemic, you know, we're not even back yet, you're just going to kill New York City. And this is what's going to happen. This is exactly what's going to happen. So you also close stations. You close Elmhurst on the Long Island Railroad. You close Glendale, that services my district, on the Long Island Railroad. So if you came up with a plan for the congestion pricing, at least throw us a bone. At least give us better service. You're not doing that. You're not, you didn't, the Queens Link, the Queens Rail, you haven't really, you know, it's up where, somewhere. I mean, build that first. If you want to do all that, you want to improve the public transportation for the other boroughs. If you want to do all that, you want to improve the public transportation for the other boroughs other than Manhattan, then do that first before you put this ridiculous tax that's going to kill New York City. Definitely kill New York City. So why do the, let me just get back to the question about the assessment study versus the impact study. Why, you know that the impact study is more complete, right? It'll get very, very accurate figures. Why not do that?
As to the reason we did an environmental assessment, it was Federal Highway Administration that determined that that was the appropriate form of environmental review. Our environmental assessment was more detailed, larger, more expansive than many, many, many other, not just environmental assessments, but it was akin to an EIS in terms of the depth and the breadth of the document. And it was the document on which Federal Highway did, in fact, find no significant impact.
If you cared about the environment, because there's other neighborhoods that are going to be impacted by this, with the pollution that's going to be created, because people, the people don't travel by car into Manhattan because they like to do that. It's because they have to do that. And there's a number of reasons. I had to drive my both aging parents to hospitals in Manhattan. If I had to pay congestion pricing, that would drive me away from Manhattan. That would drive me away from hospitals in Manhattan. That would, that would drive me out of New York City, and that's what you're doing. This is what's happening. This is going to happen.
All right, thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I have always, you know, voted for congestion pricing, but there are so many challenges. I do want to pick up on the fact that, you know, people don't trust the MTA, as hard as you're working. And so what's the lockbox? I have a whole bunch of questions, and then you can figure out how you want to answer them. What is the lockbox discussion for $1 billion, $2 billion, $3 billion? So people understand in a transparent faction where that money is going. That's number one. Number two, originally, we heard that we're not going to be hearings, and then the governor's office said there would be hearings. I want to know, because people, we all testified last year, I testified, but people, they didn't focus. Now they're focused. So I want to know when the hearings are going to be scheduled and how many there will be. I also want to say something, as a Manhattanite, without a car, I take the subway, I take taxis, two things. You need rental cars that are affordable, and they shouldn't charge for an EZ Pass. They charge $26 sometimes, just to have an EZ Pass. So you have to figure out, if you're telling people, don't bring your car, then you have to figure out where the rental cars, make it easier for rental cars, it would be nice if they were less expensive, and they should have an EZ Pass that doesn't cost the renter. To me, that would make sense. Nobody's paying any attention to that. I also want to just talk about the installation, because I have, thank you, gotten information about the installations and the technology, and I appreciate that. I think people are still freaked out because they don't know what it means, so you have to describe if there are no health effects, or if there are health effects, it comes up. So I just need to know that that's something that you feel is or is not correct. Sam Schwartz, today, in the Daily News, had article, I don't know if it was him or the editorial board, but basically, he said taxis should not be charged, yellow caps. I am 100% supportive of not challenging. You're telling people, don't take their own car, sometimes they have to take a cab, it's already expensive, I know exactly how much it costs. Taxi should not be, even once, should be charged. Those are the beginnings of my questions. I have more, if you could answer those.
I'm always happy to take further questions offline. The capital lockbox, again, is defined in state law.
You've got to go further than state law.
I'm not sure how we go further than state law, but pursuant to the state law that created the congestion pricing law, this is the MTA implementing a law of the state of New York. We did not unilaterally create this. The congestion pricing revenues, the internet sales tax revenues, and a mansion tax, there are real estate transaction taxes, these were created back in 2019 as part of this whole package, go into a capital lockbox that cannot be spent on random things. It goes into our 2024 capital program. All told, they create about $25 billion worth of our $51.5 billion CPRB-approved capital plan. I note CPRB-approved because there is a larger number you might hear, which includes our bridges and tunnels, capital work, which is self-sustaining.
I understand that, but just to give you an example, to the credit of NYPD, every single day, I get, I don't know, if somebody, you know, stubs their toe when the cops are involved, I get an email. So it would be good for the MTA to, you know, tell more people what's in the lockbox, not just to have some place in obscure locations where people could get that information.
So, Councilmember, I think one of the things that I take pride in working for this agency, as far as government agencies go, we produce some of the most transparent information in government, especially in open data format, which has been a big initiative moving forward. You're welcome to peruse our website, come to our monthly board and committee meetings, where we do report quarterly, we report on this lockbox where the money is.
All right. Well, we can talk offline.
Sure.
That's just not how you communicate with the general public, if I may say so.
I would suggest that isn't our full, you know, thing, getting complicated information to our everyday writer. I don't disagree.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember.
They have an answer.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I got a whole bunch of questions, not an answer.
We have a checklist. There will be, as Dr. DiSarino pointed out, there will be a State Administrative Procedure Act compliant public comment period with multiple public hearings sometime after the TMRB has made its recommendations and they've gone to the MTA board. I don't have that timeline certain yet because the TMRB has not concluded their work. We will, of course, notify the council and the public when those hearings will take place.
Okay, and then also about the rental cars?
That is not the jurisdiction of the MTA. We don't have oversight over the rental car industry.
But you don't have any import or suggestions that that is an issue?
We suggest making access to EZ Pass as easy as humanly possible because it solves a lot of headaches that we deal with, with a number of members of this council.
Okay, and then who would, just one more question. 60th Street is in my district. I have a building 30 West 60th Street, the garage is on 61st, so they're going to have to pay whatever to get their car. Is that something that the mobile task force is dealing with, or you? Who's going to deal with walking 60th Street, east or west, to figure out what are some of the challenges? Literally, you step across it to pay, to pick up your car.
Allison, you want to take that one?
Somebody has to walk the whole 60th Street. I don't know who that would be and figure out what the challenges are.
Yes, the project team actually, early on, did walk the 60th Street.
And they told all the communities about that walk?
We, what we did was, we made sure that all of the communities, as I mentioned earlier, as part of the outreach, five blocks north, five blocks south, and across 60th Street received.
I didn't get any information on that.
We can check on that offline. We sent postcards to every residence.
I did not get invited to the walk.
No, not to this walk, but to the outreach process.
No, not to the walk. To the outreach process.
I need to be invited to a walk to go with you, because when you don't live there, you may not see the same thing.
We would be happy to go for a walk with you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I was curious about you, Gil, with your area and outreach. Councilmember Marte?
Thank you for being here. I have to jump on Councilmember Brewer's point where some of the outreach, I believe, was inadequate. My whole council district is in the CBD zone, and so I haven't received anything in the mail. I can talk to constituents, I know a lot of them are here, and I'm sure a lot of them didn't receive anything in the mail as well. I don't own a car, so maybe that was one reason why you didn't target me, but that's a huge concern when you don't even do outreach to the council member of the district. That's going to be the most impacted. I want to touch on a few points, so I'm going to just ask my question straight through, and I'll allow you guys to answer it. I want to make sure, and I think this is accurate, that folks living in Battery Park City will not pay any toll for leaving Battery Park City to go to other areas in the financial district, or even to, let's say, Madison Square Garden, because they're within the central business district. I know that was a lot of concerns, but I think they won't have to pay, but I want a confirmation on the record from you. In addition, when it comes to disabilities, as you mentioned, you're going to allow people with license plates that have a logo of, for people with disabilities, to have some sort of discount or exemption. However, what we've seen in our office is that to get that license plate, it takes six months. And so you're going to have people who are going to need to go to the hospital, and I know my district has some of the best hospitals, but some of our seniors and people with disability actually go outside of the borough, or go outside of the central business district, especially with cancer-related issues. They go to Salon Kelling, Kellering, who are about them. And what's going to happen about expediting these permits to make sure that people who need to get the care they need won't have to pay an additional tax? My last question is, we know that there's models of congestion pricing that work around the world, in London, Singapore, Stockholm, and that do have exemptions that are widely popular. For example, in Stockholm, I think it's overwhelmingly popular that there is no controversy or no issues. Why weren't some of those exemptions taken into account or implemented in the first approval, and not kicked down the road to have this fight at the bitter end? Yeah, thank you.
Allison, I'm going to answer that last question first, and an assertion that you made. Again, we did reach out to your office when we had the outreach, I can provide receipts for that. There was signage in the system. We have not mailed things to residents' homes yet. Again, as Dr. DiSarino pointed out, there is a public education campaign required per the state law that we will be launching. We have not gotten there yet, but as far as the outreach went, it was exhaustive. Multi-language newspaper ads, radio ads, signage in the system, signage on rolling stock on the bus system, in other states and counties outside of the five boroughs. Happy to talk to you offline about what that looked like. To your question about why it was not considered to include exemptions, again, the MTA did not draft this legislation. It was drafted by the state legislature, it was passed into law, signed by a governor. We're implementing state law. So I understand that we're here to ask or answer your questions today, but these are questions for some of your colleagues in the state legislature. What they provided to us is the framework. We are administering that program. Allison, you want to take the other questions?
Yeah, the, I think there was only the one last question regarding the disabilities and the time to get a plate. That unfortunately is not part of our jurisdiction, that comes from the Department of Motor Vehicles. But, you know, it is certainly something we'll take back to the group in terms of, as we're planning, I mentioned earlier, that we don't have all the standard operating procedures and processes yet. We're developing them, and that is something certainly I'll take back to the team as we think about the timing for everything.
Just wanted to add one last point, building off Councilmember Brewer's, is that not everyone in my district has a credit card, now everyone has access to EZ Pass, so you're really creating a barrier for people, like, depending where they live and their income levels and their accessibilities, to have access to these equipments. So it would be great if there are other methods, so people can actually travel without being penalized. Thank you.
I echo that sentiment as well. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Narcisse.
Good morning. Thank you for being here, and thank you, Chair. MTA is not going my way right now in our 46th district, so I hope MTA will go our way sometimes, and I hope it's very soon. Talking about congestion prices, with electric vehicles beginning to dominate the car market, are there any provisions within the plan to scale back pricing once the vast majority of New Yorkers are driving zero emission cars? That's one. What's the proposed timeline for evaluating the effects and potential adjustment to the congestion price system after its implementation? Three, we are projected environmental benefits and with, I mean, of congestion price in terms of emissions reduction and air quality, which I don't think is that's the reason the prices increase. I'm with my colleague, Councilmember Holden. How do we ensure that congestion price pricing does not disproportionately affect lower-income drivers or communities? I think some of the question, we're going to get exemptions and all, but I never seen exemption, I mean, roll on in our community fast enough because of the information and how fast they're receiving those information. The next concern I have is with Accessoride. Accessoride, we have received numerous calls in our office all the time, complaints about Accessoride liability, reliability. We cannot provide the data right now, but you should know by now that a lot of folks are not satisfied with Accessoride, even before the pandemic. Are there plans to increase the fleet size or incorporate newer technologies to improve the efficiency and reliability of this Accessoride business? What are the main challenges that the MTA facing, making Accessoride a real Accessoride for those that need it the most? Like, this morning, I have someone with that, disabled, but trying to make it to work. She had scheduled for 9:30, and it was, she got to work about 11:59. So that's risking, you know, for her to lose her job. And she's disabled, she cannot move around, so I want to know what are, what we can do, because I hate asking what you can do, but what we can do together as service providers, as agency, and we as council members can do to improve that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. In terms of the electric vehicle discounts, it is one of the exemptions that has been requested, that is in our list, that has been shared with the Traffic Mobility Review Board, and they are aware of that request. With respect to the timeline for evaluating effects, in a sense, in some ways, it's already begun. What we need to do is, we're already geared up to get the initial baseline and have some of that information already in terms of various effects, whether it's air quality, traffic, transit, pedestrians, et cetera. When we go live, we will be collecting data rigorously all the way through, and indeed, we have commitments, we have requirements in legislation for reporting, and we have extended our reporting requirements with additional commitments in the final EA to have that information, not just when the legislation required it, which was one year after go-live, and then every other year subsequent. We've committed to having that information on our project website, and as my colleague, Will Schwartz, pointed out earlier, we're committed to an open data format to the greatest extent possible, to ensure that people have active and regular access to the information that we're gathering regarding the effects. On ensuring that there would be no driver effects on the environmental justice communities or drivers, importantly, when we were awarded the finding of no significant impact by the Federal Highway Administration, that finding is based on the in-depth analysis that we provided, and the mitigation commitments and the comments that we put together and responses that we put together. And so the way that we're going to do that, and it's been found that there won't be a significant impact, is in part because we have that low-income discount that will be offered. Regarding the concern of ensuring that people are aware of that discount, as we've spoken, we will be having extensive outreach, making sure to get into the communities, helping people to sign up, helping people to get those EZ Pass tags, helping people to understand that they don't need a credit card to back them, and how that works and what that means, and how they, and help them to understand how they'd be able to fund it when they need to, if they don't want to pre-fund it.
On Accessoride, Councilmember, good to see you again, by the way. On Accessoride, you know, we'll get to the information particular that you referenced offline, and just to keep that person's anonymity, you know, or confidential, but just taking a step back, I mean, two years ago, Accessoride customer satisfaction was 43%, 44%, not great. Today, it's in the mid-70s. So we've made a lot of strides to improve our Accessoride experience, but as I have said over and over again, I cannot discount the, you know, the life experience that a customer may have that's disappointing. We don't get it right every day, that's for sure. On the technology point, we have been making some improvements for our Accessoride technology. So for example, our customers can now book online or using our app, as opposed to needing to call in to our service, and we are actually shrinking the window of, right now, we consider a pickup of within 30 minutes to be on time. We're actually shrinking that window by the end of this year to 20 minutes, which is better than the industry average, because we have been pushing both our blue and whites, you know, the Accessoride vehicles that we own and contract to, and then frankly, you know, some of our colleagues here who operate for hire vehicles and taxis, who also carry our customers as well. That has been also, I think, an improvement for our customers, and we do appreciate those that in this room who help us in that regard. But we still have, you know, we still have room to grow, and room to improve, I should say, when it comes to Accessoride. But so far, I've been proud of the progress we've made, but again, for that particular instance, happy to get those specific pieces of information, and we'll reach out to that customer and find out what happened.
The question that I want to know is the car market, as we getting to be electrical cars, there is any provisions to, for the plan to scale back? Because it's a burden, but if we're doing it for environmental issue, I think we can scale back when, because it's 2030, by 2030, so, because like my CM, the CM Holden said, the middle class, so we have to look at not pushing too hard. We want people to stay in New York City. And don't forget us, as we can collaborate with you, 51 council member, when you have information, we can actually help in disseminate the information that we need to in our community. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Rivera? Councilmember Rivera?
Yeah, I'm mute.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will be very quick, because I'm having a little bit of some technical difficulties here. But, great, okay. So Manhattan-Below 59th Street is not merely a commercial business district, and I know some of my colleagues have asked questions about this. It is home to thousands of families approximately, which I'd say 20% of whom own cars. This is a small portion of vehicle users, yet they stand to bear an unequal burden as they cannot avoid the Central Business District. It's where they live. How have you evaluated the impact of congestion pricing on Manhattan drivers? Manhattan drivers don't follow the typical congestion traffic pattern, so in your evaluation, did you notice anything about the way CBD residents use their cars? And I'll also add two-wheel vehicles, because we have a large motorcycle user community, and I want to make sure that they also feel represented in terms of exceptions and discounts that are discussed. And then my last question, because I know I don't have a lot of time, and hopefully you can answer them very concisely and quickly, is in the environmental assessment, some scenarios led to increased air pollution in the Lower East Side due to increased traffic on the FDR Drive. Is this increase present in the accepted scenarios, or are you looking at including portions of the FDR Drive in tolling scenarios for the future? And my last question is many of my constituents who rely on cars for work are in the film and television industry. Has the MTA engaged with film and television industry members, studios, and production companies so that the workers don't bear additional costs that are required for their jobs? Those are my questions, Madam Chair. Thank you for calling on me. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and I look forward to your answers.
Thank you. Sorry, I have my notes this way, so I'm gonna flip around the questions so I can read them. Let me actually start with the air pollution issue on the Lower East Side. Importantly, the finding of the final EA was actually that in terms of air quality, there would be a regional air quality benefit, and that none of the, none of the scenarios exceeded the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, or NACS as they're called. And importantly, as we know, you know, the air is actually shared across the region. With that said, we looked very closely, particularly at environmental justice communities, and saw that in some cases, there would be traffic benefit, and in some cases, there are potential increases in that traffic, one of which is that Lower East Side. That was on the FDR Drive. That was actually raised in our working groups as well. Importantly, we do have a mitigation in the environmental assessment specifically for that issue. What we found in our modeling, as you asked, like, did we look at specific type of modeling and how people move around? What we found was that the issue with the FDR Drive in particular involved some of the traffic that was going northbound on the FDR Drive to then turn around and come back down, and that by ensuring that there would be a toll location there to capture those people who are trying to do that, they actually do cross briefly into the Central Business District, that in fact, that mitigation would help that traffic increase. So we did look to that degree there. In terms of the film and industry members, specific, again, as part of our overall outreach, we had people from all walks of life and from all different industries, and again, this is one of the issues as the Traffic Mobility Review Board looks at the large number of types of requests for exemptions, discounts, and credits. This is another area that they would be made aware of, if not already. Oh, yeah, and thank you, Will. And then motorcycles. Yes, we heard, we heard quite a bit from the motorcycle community during the hearings and the early outreach and through our environmental justice groups, and again, that is one of the items that is on that list of 122 requested types of exemptions or discounts.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Chair. Just. Thank you, Chair. Just want to talk about our reso that's before the council and the panelists today. How can the MTA, with the kind of money they've already taken in, which is $11.28 billion total, and a new annual revenue of $2.226 billion total, not counting what you would get from the proposed congestion pricing, how could you continue to say that there's no way we can now finally look at a true EIS for the Queens Link and for better, better transportation to Southern Queens? It doesn't make sense. You continue to kick the can down the road, and it really does have to stop. You're raising fares, you're raising bridge and tunnels, you're putting in, you're getting money from casinos, you're getting money from the state, and you want to now have money from congestion pricing. There's money for this study. People in Southern Queens, they deserve good, good transportation methods and options. So my question regarding congestion pricing, and bear in mind that by and large, my constituents are middle-class. If an individual working or living in Tribeca or the West Village wants to grab a cab or take their own car to Broadway to see a show, will they pay a congestion fee?
If somebody starts within the Central Business District and does not leave the Central Business District, at this time, they would not pay a congestion fee, a toll.
So basically, then, I, when I, my constituents ask me that question, I would have to say that if you can afford to live in a congestion zone in Manhattan, which is the point of focus of taking away congestion and decongesting that area, you as a borough-based resident and a middle-class resident are being made to pay this exorbitant tax, when if you lived in Manhattan and could afford to live in Manhattan, you would not have to, you would be exempt from that obligation. Does that seem fair?
Can't, it's really not appropriate for me to comment on that piece of it. We are abiding by what the legislation describes and what we have determined in terms of being able to build the infrastructure through the cordon.
What the legislature has prescribed really does not benefit any type of resident of the outer boroughs. It is, it will not allow people from the outer boroughs to go into Manhattan, and I agree with my colleagues who've said this before me. It will only negatively impact not just the boroughs and the extra parking and the extra congestion in the boroughs, but Manhattan for people who are coming in. An earlier part of your testimony was that you did not find that there would be an impact for people who go into Manhattan for their medical services. I cannot imagine that that's true. I don't know how you did that study, because the majority of people in the five boroughs, the outer boroughs and the four outer boroughs of Manhattan, receive some type of medical treatment in Manhattan, and that would be hindered. And some places, like the Rockaway Peninsula, that the chair and I share, is a hospital and medical care, healthcare desert. So I don't understand how you could possibly say that on the record, but certainly, I hope that people are listening and they can understand that this is going to be a tax burden, but also a healthcare burden and a substantial tax income burden for this city, because no one will be coming into Manhattan to the places like Broadway and to restaurants. Thank you so much, Chair, for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Lewis, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for being here today. I have three quick questions. Before I ask my questions, based off of a statement that you all made earlier, are you saying that the MTA did not lobby the New York State Legislature for the CBD TP program?
I think the comment I made was about who wrote the law and passed it and signed it into law. That was the governor at the time and the state legislature. Of course, the MTA is part of finding funding for the current capital program was involved in it. We seamlessly support congestion pricing.
So you did lobby?
But, of course, but some of the questions and assertions that have been made indicate that we create tax policy, which we do not.
All right, at least we have that for the record. All right. I wanted to know if you can restate for the record the algorithm system for tolling that was mentioned earlier, and if you can discuss briefly what the process is for reimbursement for those that are charged double according to that algorithm system that was mentioned earlier? Thank you.
Certainly. I'm not sure what you're alluding to in terms of saying those who are charged double.
So you mentioned earlier algorithm system?
Mm-hmm.
And you said there's a possibility that folks can be charged twice depending on the tracking?
No.
Okay, so if you could restate for the record?
Yeah. So in essence, the way the algorithm would work is we have detection points along the highway segments of the FDR Drive and the West Side Highway. The first time the vehicle is seen, it would be identified. If it stays on the excluded roadway, what we would do is we would track it, so each time it's seen, in essence, the system in lay terms, in essence, says, ah, I saw that vehicle before. Based on traffic, it should take roughly 10 minutes to get to the next spot. At that next spot, it looks, and it says, okay, it's about 10 minutes, and I see that vehicle again. And it keeps doing that and tracks the vehicle all the way down. If the vehicle stays entirely on that excluded roadway, let's say, for example, it started at 60th Street, and it comes all the way down and goes out through the Hugh Carey Tunnel, it would not receive a charge, it would not receive a toll. If, however, you know, it gets to that first spot, and it should be 10 minutes, and it's 12, 15, something minutes, and we haven't seen that vehicle, and then it goes to the next place, and we still don't see that vehicle, at that point, there would be a toll, because the assumption by the algorithm would be they must have gone in because we do not see them anywhere else.
Thank you for that description. So hypothetically, if I'm a senior, happen to live in central Brooklyn, and I decide to take the excluded road you spoke about, and I happen to get lost going to my appointment to go for oncology services, and the algorithm cannot track me, and I got lost, I'm gonna be charged twice?
You would, first of all, we'd never charge you twice. In fact, by legislation, passenger vehicles can only be told once daily, so that's very important. That's built into our business rules, it's built into the whole way the system is being developed. As to the case you described, we call these edge cases. That means that, you know, the very vast majority, well over 95%, 98%, however it is, percent of people, the system works without an issue. On occasion, something happens. We find that today. We have people who go over our facilities today, something happened, they got confused, they went back over the facility that they didn't mean to go back over. Typically, what happens is they call customer service, and we work these out on case-by-case bases, depending upon what's going on. We have a very robust, and I know there was some discussion before, but we do have a very, very robust customer service center. We often, just like with anything, people focus on sort of the big news items that are out there by something that happened, but really, we have fewer than 1% of our customers every day that are coming through. That's over an annual basis, I should say. Fewer than 1% actually have any trouble where they have to approach the customer service center for this.
While, while you all feel that it's robust, we have constituents that complain often about being charged, getting lost, and not getting the services they needed. So you may want to factor that into your process. The next question I have is in regards outreach efforts. I know that you all have hosted events around the city in the last couple of months, but I wanted to know what you all are doing regarding language access, because what's happening for the folks in central Brooklyn, particularly taxi drivers, Uber drivers, or just constituents, they don't get the information about the workshops unless it's coming to us. We don't get it in an ample amount of time in order to disseminate to folks. So I wanted to know, and I know you don't have this system ready right now, what are you doing about language access? And how many languages are you all thinking about when you do produce information to share with the community?
So what we did, what we did during the early outreach and the formal public comment period, as I mentioned, we had nine languages. It was eight different languages plus English. We also ensured that we had American Sign Language, and we also ensured CARTE, thank you, captioning. The documents themselves also importantly are created in what they call 508 compliance now for visually impaired. So we anticipate, we will work with Will's group, but we anticipate ensuring that we have as much access as, beyond what most people would anticipate would be possible. In terms of determining those languages, we actually went to look through the different counties to determine what were the languages with the highest proportions, so that it wasn't even the typical where we would just look at our area, or we would look and say, oh, we only need this many or that many. We went beyond what would typically be expected or required.
And I'll just add to that, too. Councilmember, you can be helpful to us, you know, so we seek to go above and beyond. We use the demographic data that we have. When we go out, for instance, when we're doing the Brooklyn Bus Network redesign, if we go into community, we know that the English is not the only language spoken. We seek to bring interpretation with us. If you're not seeing what you need, let us know. We're always open to further guidance and suggestion on that front. It's something that, as we really have been trying to push the conversation around accessibility at the MTA, it doesn't just mean elevators anymore. Language access is important for us, so we're really happy to work with you on that and would welcome your guidance on that.
And the Brooklyn Bus redesign is the perfect example. I had to translate for myself in Creole and find constituents to translate in Urdu so that our constituents are fully aware of what was happening with the, with the bus redesign. But I have one more question, because my time is up or almost up. 120 million was given to the environmental justice for the Bronx for this program, but I wanted to know what's being done for Brooklyn, because we have transportation deserts in Brooklyn, mainly in Councilmember Narcisse's district, parts of my district, and some of my other colleagues. So I wanted to know what was being done in Brooklyn? Is there funding being put towards the IBX program that the governor has proposed? And what else is being done for the Avenue L train station?
So I'm gonna take the IBX question, and I'll kick it over to Dr. DiSerenio. We just announced recently that we've awarded the environmental consultant for the inner borough, which is the next step in that process. As I mentioned, compared to other projects in our comparative valuation, that was a little bit further behind as far as the amount of study that had been done on it to date, so that's underway, that's moving forward. We're happy to follow up with you offline and connect on that one. Allison, you want to talk about other mitigations in congestion pricing?
In terms of the mitigation commitments, we have two types of mitigation commitments, beyond the things like the low-income discount, the mitigation I mentioned earlier on the FDR Drive, the overnight. We hadn't talked about that earlier, but we also have a commitment for reduced fare, a reduced toll in the overnight. The mitigation that we have related specifically to environmental justice communities where there could be increased traffic, we have in the final EA the various communities that are identified that could be part of this. If, after we have that final toll structure, we're going to be doing an assessment to see where we anticipate traffic reductions and if there continue to be any increases. We would then go into those communities to identify the specific census tracts and then interact with those communities to determine where the place-based mitigation would be potentially situated. So in terms of the two types, we have regional mitigation that most notably, and that will be beneficial for much of the region, is an extension of or expansion of New York City's Clean Trucks Program. In terms of the place-based mitigation, there are a number of items that these communities are eligible for. They would be roadside vegetation, parks and green space, and air filtering, air quality filters for schools near some of the highways. As part of that, we also have some, well, I'll come back to that. In terms of the specific areas, as I mentioned in the final EA, and you can also find this in the executive summary, which is online, but we can also provide that if that would be helpful, we do have the communities identified for that place-based mitigation would be South Williamsburg and downtown Brooklyn, Fort Greene area, are actually formally identified to be monitored as we come up with that final toll structure.
So that doesn't include neighborhoods in central Brooklyn, as I stated earlier, that would cover or encompass Councilmember Narcisse's district, my district, and some others? So you may want to include that in your assessment? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair Brooks Powers. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Amanda Farias. It is no secret that outer borough communities like mine, especially those in the Bronx, will be most negatively impacted by congestion pricing. Most of our city's essential workers live in the outer boroughs, and most of our outer boroughs are not only transit deserts, but accessibility deserts, as many of my colleagues have already mentioned. The proposed congestion pricing rules are an issue of environmental and economic justice for my neighbors. We will not only have even more traffic coming through our neighborhoods, but we'll potentially be paying large sums just to drive within our own city, a city that created the very inequities Bronxites inequities Bronxites are burdened with every day. My district is home to the Cross Bronx and other major highways, and because of that, we're also home to the highest asthma rates in the nation. Over the many, over the years, many of us in government and in our communities through advocacy have spent decades combating the Robert Moses era infrastructure that has created high asthma rates, increased traffic and congestion, lack of access to economic opportunity, and dependency on cars. In transit inaccessible communities where Bronxites have had to find ways just to make ends meet. Our communities took on jobs in healthcare as drivers, et cetera, full of essential workers, and all had to commute outside of their communities for work, groceries, and just to cross across the Bronx. I really hope we can continue to make attempts to foresee future potential damaging regulations on our communities and not have us look back in 10, 20 years like we currently do with Robert Moses era infrastructure. While many of my concerns about some of the negative impacts will continue to be raised until the finality of this implementation, I will continue to look forward to learning about the plans as you guys have given us questions through testimony today and so they're rolled out. And Councilmember Lewis's questions were a perfect transition into mine. The MTA has committed 120 million for environmental justice in the Bronx to mitigate any impacts of congestion pricing. Can you please update the committee on this funding and how will the funding be spent specifically for the Bronx? For example, we have a lot of efforts around capping the Cross Bronx right now. Are there mitigants for air and asthma rates, for truck rerouting? Or there's been ideas I've seen thrown around for an asthma center, which I haven't seen any formal completion on. Does the MTA have data to show that the measures it has proposed will adequately address any potential increase in emissions in these communities? I'd like to hear about the Bronx EA if possible. And does MTA plan on implementing similar programs in other boroughs? If so, when can they expect to see that funding? And I'm happy to repeat any questions.
Thank you. Let me sort of just put it in the context again. When the final EA was developed, and for those of you who may not have seen it, there was a technical memorandum added for the final EA in Chapter 17. It's 17D, if I recall, is a very thorough assessment of the potential localized effects as a result of either decreased or increased traffic. The way the NIPA process works, we look for both beneficial and/or adverse effects. And then there is a, sort of an additional look at environmental justice communities in particular to see where those effects are happening.
Right.
So when we did that work and identified the communities that I mentioned that are in the final EA as areas where, in many cases, we actually saw decreases in traffic, but then in a census tracked a few over, you would see an increase in the traffic, right, as everybody starts to move around. Those areas are the ones that are specifically identified that would be eligible for this place-based mitigation. The regional mitigation would help the overall area.
Sure.
So now in terms of the, and in terms of the questions you had, for example, for those who may not be as familiar, obviously you are a councilmember, the, there is a commitment for replacement of the TRUs or the transport refrigeration units at Hunts Point with cleaner technology. We worked very closely with our colleagues in the city on this to provide the data and the background. We also worked with the Environmental Justice Technical Advisory Group to hear their input on things that, and mitigation that they felt would be warranted and would be helpful and desirable. That included, in some cases, we actually took a tour of some of the South Bronx area with one of the members, several participants, but from the same entity, to really show us and walk us through what they were experiencing and what was happening. In terms of the timing on it, as you may imagine, we just got the federal approval not too long ago. So this is now something where all three project sponsors are coordinating, New York State Department of Transportation, New York City Department of Transportation, and MTA, to coordinate on how do we now go forward, get the, whatever MOUs we need in place, for example, get all of the documentation together, ensure that we've got everything ready to go, so that when we have that toll structure recommended and then adopted, and we do that final analysis to understand where are the places that in actuality we will expect to see something, that's when we envision going out to talk to the communities, more specifically, to then have a process in place to set these things up and to actually implement. In terms of the actual timelines, that's something that we would have to get back to you. They're being developed still, and each of the different mitigation items would have different timelines depending upon what it is.
And I, just a quick follow-up. I vaguely remember this and I'm happy to be corrected or to give some more information on it. In terms of when the, I think it was in the EA, looking at what impacts the Cross Bronx Expressway is going to have, there was a DOT flag or like recommendation that the East Bronx and like Southeast Bronx, which I represent, was going to see a lot of flow of traffic away from the Cross Bronx Expressway into our local streets, and that was the anticipated impact of that? Have we, is there more information on that? Have we looked at what local routes look like, local truck routes, both major, minor? Or if we're expecting some of the mitigations to be seen more up outside of the South Bronx specific, but more in the East Bronx to kind of balance out some of the air impacts that we're going to see, or traffic impacts that we're going to see?
So I think that'll again be dependent. We did not, we can follow up with you separately. We did not find that that would be as much of an issue. What we found was mostly that the diversions that we would see would be along the major routes. With that said, as part of the EJ outreach and discussions we had, there were concerns raised and we're aware of them. When that comes to the point, again, as we have that final toll structure recommendation and adoption, we would do that assessment to better understand what we anticipate seeing. And I anticipate that as part of the outreach, we will be, again, having communication and back and forth with the various constituents about it.
Yeah, I'd love for us to maybe kind of get ahead of some of the conversations that should maybe our plan to happen a little later. My district specifically sees the 295, the 95, the Hutchinson River, the Bronx River, and it's just a major flow of Robert Moses era infrastructure. And we already know that people will find or try to find the ways to avoid paying any additional fees. And like I said, my district is car-dependent. We're multi-generational households, working families that don't have, you have one train line, few major busways that go across the Bronx. People are dependent on going to their appointments, on going across the Bronx, at going to work, including myself, on their cars. And so I'd like to just figure out, at least start conversations early to figure out ways that we can, either I can make more advocacy at the state level for my constituents, or we can find ways to mitigate on the way down towards the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Councilmember Palladino, followed by Holden, and then Brewer.
Good afternoon, everybody. We sat here for the last two hours listening to a whole bunch of mumbo jumbo. I don't know how many of you actually understood what was said here in these last two hours, but I'll make it really simple for everybody. It's robbing the middle class once again, so that we can completely and utterly throw money down the black hole known as the MTA. MTA projects are chronically over budget and behind schedule to the tune of billions of dollars already. A recent audit by the State Comptroller showed systemic issues at every step in the MTA project pipeline, ranging from sloppy management to contractors that are being paid for work that simply has never been done. In fact, the fiscal mismanagement of the MTA is so bad that Albany's 2023 budget included a $1.3 billion bailout for this agency, an agency that already has a $20 billion budget. This city is in dire straits. This can no longer sit simply in Manhattan. This is coming to the outer boroughs. These are simple, blue-collar workers, and yet you choose to strangle them? Because that's exactly what's going on. This is a pure attack on the middle class. We cannot sustain this in addition to everything else this city is going through. And I'm telling you right now, as far as my constituents go, this is a day where we're talking about robbing New Yorkers with a predatory pricing scheme supposedly so that we can hand more money over to the MTA. That's all this is. This is, this is an attack on the middle class. Congestion pricing does not work, period. End of sentence, and that's it.
Okay, so now we have round two, which is Councilmember Holden, Brewer, and we're ending with Farias, and I know the MTA has.
Thank you, Chair, for round two. I just want to go back to the environmental impact study, because what Councilmember Farias just said about her district and many districts outside of the zone will be impacted and they'll get more congestion, more pollution, but we're willing to just write that off. And without doing an environmental impact, you're cheating New Yorkers. You're cheating the environment and you're jeopardizing the health of other people. You're just displacing the health hazards in New York City. So that's why an impact study was essential. And the fact that you didn't shows the commitment that you really have to this, because you don't have to do it. We were told we didn't have to do it. Well, that's ridiculous. But let me just go, you know, according to the Blue Ribbon Panel Report on fare and toll evasion, the MTA lost an estimated 690 million in unpaid fares and tolls in 2022. 690 million. Now, we know that if we enforce, if we develop the system, I know you're working on a system for entry, but we lost so much, so much money, and we do it every day, you're losing money every day, that where there's a will, there's a way, first of all, on these toll collectors. So I anticipate, and I think many of you, I don't know if you have the technology to track down people who are evading the tolls with their doctor license plates, because they put a leaf, they're very creative. They put a leaf over a piece of tape and they get around that. And those people will do it. And also, they'll go down streets the wrong way. So what technology do you have set up in this program that will catch those guys?
So I'm gonna take that as I handle our legislative portfolio in Albany as well. I'm glad we found some common ground. That's something that we've been asking the state legislature for further authority on. It's not an MTA problem alone, but Board Authority, New York State Authority, DOT are losing tens of millions of dollars a year in uncollectible toll revenues because of fake license plates, obstructed license plates. So we would welcome a partnership with you in pushing for greater enforcement technology. We've proposed making that a Class A misdemeanor, that if you willfully violate a toll, that you be held accountable because you're stealing from the public.
So this is something that the governor could do, actually.
And has proposed. She has proposed.
She proposed, yeah. Been going on for how long? It's since we had these, obviously, these photo toll collectors that read your license plate. That's been going on that long? And you can go down any block in New York City and see people that are doing this. Yet, the MTA is, if we have, you have to push the governor, obviously, it's in your best interest to push the governor, but the governor hasn't really used state troopers as much as she could have. They're sitting there in their cars by tunnels and bridges, and these guys are going by. I mean, I sat in front of one today.
Allison, wearing your Bridge and Tunnels hat, you want to talk about recent efforts that we've been stepping up on enforcement with the tools that we have?
Yeah, certainly. So we have, so first, I want to just start off by saying the vast.
Well, I just, an answer to my question about the technology.
Allison is much better suited, I assure you.
But again, if there's, because we, I asked the NYPD this, and they didn't, they didn't have anything to find out. If somebody has something covering their plate, that they could track them down with technology? Is that's what?
So a couple of things. First, I do want to be clear, the vast majority of the people who use our facilities, and we anticipate that will be the same for Central Business District tolling, the vast majority of the people do the right thing. They pay the toll that's due, they pay it on time. And the few people who don't are the ones that we have a robust program to address. That program starts, and I also want to be very clear, because I've also heard today about people who have problems, right, who accidentally fall into this group. So we give our customers, whether they're Easy Pass or tolls by mail customers, as many opportunities to pay as possible before we then start to escalate, right? So when somebody goes through and we don't see an Easy Pass, we capture an image of their license plate. There are different types of technologies that help us with identifying those plates, pieces of plates, et cetera. And some of that technology continues to improve, and we keep an eye on that technology in terms of how this might help us going forward.
What's that called? What's the technology called?
It's license plate recognition and optical recognition technology.
Because why are so many people doing it if they're getting caught?
I can't speak to that part.
So they're not, obviously, I'd like to see the numbers on this, because if it's working, if that technology works, because the police department does, I've asked a number, I asked the chief of patrol, he doesn't know anything, any technology.
So our TBTA, our TBTA people, we have, let me, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, Councilmember, because I'll walk you through sort of just the whole process, it doesn't take that long. But what we do is we first, when we have a vehicle and they haven't paid, we go and we send out the first notice. They still have time to pay. They have another 30 days, they get 30 days, they get the first notice, they have another 30 days to pay. If they haven't paid at that point, then eventually it becomes a violation notice and says, you need to pay. If they still don't pay at that point, then we have different opportunities for escalating. So it's a lot of process. One of the things that we do, and this we were fortunate to have implemented legally some years ago, is the ability to suspend registrations for non-payment of toll collection once we have what we call persistent toll violator. That's somebody who's done this repeatedly. Those persistent toll violators, we do have the tools that we need and we do go after them. We have both, we have in essence a list of those who've had their vehicle suspended, and that list is actually uploaded on a regular basis, and our Bridge and Tunnel officers regularly go out looking for these people. We also have targeted enforcement, and I'm sure you've seen it in the news, because we do it very regularly, where we go out at certain times and we do the analytics on the side to see when are people coming, where are they coming from, where would we expect them to be? And all of that information, technology-wise, is actually uploaded. So we have the license plate recognition that is in essence looking for those plates as they come through. We know that those are the plates that haven't paid, and then our officers pull them over and deal with them accordingly.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember, we just want to make sure we get to Councilmember Brewer and Farias before the MTA has to leave.
Thank you. Very quickly, when I was Borough President, I had a hearing on residential parking based on congestion pricing. So I don't know if it's a good idea or not. I want to get your opinion. I can tell you that the people around 60th Street are concerned that people are going to circle and then not be able to get their own parking spaces because they live there. Number two, I'm an Omni user, but I have to say on the buses, a quarter of the time it doesn't work. So I'm just letting you know, I don't know if that's an issue. I know you brought up all the great things you're doing, and I believe it, but I, that's my experience. And then finally, I just want to say, I know rental cars are not your issue, but if you don't own a car, you can't get an Easy Pass. You should be able to get an Easy Pass so that you could use it at the rental car. Those are my three questions.
So let me just, on the last one, let me start with that one. You can get an Easy Pass. You, you don't have to have a, you can have an Easy Pass because you can also move it from vehicle to vehicle?
I don't have a vehicle. You have to have a license plate to get it. I do not have a vehicle, and I'd like to be able to take my Easy Pass to my rental car and use it.
We can, let's talk offline, because we can help you take care of that. On the, just on the parking, and I'll let my colleague Will Schwartz answer the second part of that.
I want to take the parking.
Oh, you want to take the parking in it?
Yeah. This was a topic of discussion, the state senate included a proposal in their one-house budget resolution back in March. It's a matter for policymakers in Albany. I think the city would need state authorization to do something like that. And if that is, we assured you, we'd be able to answer all the DOT questions today, Madam Chair, but that is a question for city DOT, the administration, and the state legislature. And Omni on buses, we've talked about that before.
Yeah, Omni buses, I'd be surprised if it was a quarter of our buses.
Maybe half.
Which would mean about, that would mean 2,000, 200 buses? And we collect a lot of money every day. So are there some that aren't working? I'm sure that's true. I was on a bus in Manhattan two days ago where, where one wasn't, at the front, remember. The back, we still have not turned.
I only go in the front.
Yep, because we have not turned them on in the back yet. But a bus should not pull out if a reader isn't working. So if en route, for some reason the reader isn't working, the bus operator reboots it. But I can't guarantee 100% for sure. I would be shocked if it were a quarter of our buses.
Thank you.
And I will be quick with two questions. So just to, just to piggyback a
So just to turn, just to piggyback a little bit off of Councilmember Holden's questions around EZ Pass, what came to mind when we initially were discussing it? One of my Assemblymembers, Assemblymember Burgos, has been avidly discussing at the state level about the many issues that have folks that have EZ Pass are having with notices, with the notices around rear payments or the penalties on top of their payments. What's happening with that? How are we rectifying that? And how are we going to ensure people are not impacted by this or licenses revoked?
So I've, I've had a number of conversations with your Assemblyman about his legislation with Senator Comrie, known as the Tollpayer Protection Act. So that typically is not referring to an EZ Pass customer. It's usually not the EZ Pass customer that finds themselves in that kind of problems because, like I said earlier, if you have a maintained and up-to-date EZ Pass account, you have no problems in life. It's, it's one of the greatest tools that we have to offer. Again, I will shamelessly plug our award-winning Tolls NY app. People should use it. It's great for account maintenance. It's, it's a nice new way of technology, helping customers to maintain their accounts. So a well-maintained EZ Pass, you stay out of trouble. Where we do see customers finding themselves with issues might be through our tolls by mail program. That's what Assemblymember Burgos's bill really focuses on and talks about some of the notification provisions there.
Sure. And so will the tolls by mail program essentially being, would people be included in receiving, like, tolls by mail through congestion pricing?
Allison, you want to talk about what tolls by mail is for the group and then?
Yeah, so the tolls by mail is for customers who, for whatever reason, prefer not to have an EZ Pass. That's when you get the license, the image taken of the license plate, and we bill through the mail. And yes, the Central Business District tolling will have EZ Pass and will have tolls by mail.
Okay. And so what are conversations like in rectification of the tolls by mail program and the penalties and notifications?
Again, oftentimes when our customers find themselves in trouble, you know, we rely on information that we pull from New York State DMV. That's where we get the registered vehicle address. If you move around the city, some folks, for whatever reasons, may register their vehicles somewhere they don't live, for certain reasons, legitimate and otherwise. So the operator has a responsibility to keep their information current. We send certified mail. We can track mail down to the post office it goes to. We have relative, you know, good ways of tracking it, customers are getting it. But there are people that don't open it. They don't see it, you know, the first time that they get a pass, do notice there's a $5 late fee. Some people just don't pay it. They may not think they incurred it. We have customers that call and they say, I was driving over the Verazano for three months, and I didn't know I was supposed to be paying it. That's where we work with them and do that customer education. And as Allison has mentioned, we have a huge team with a customer contact center that is shared by the Port Authority of New York and Highway Authority as well. We are always happy to work with constituent. It has become one of my missions in this role to work with elected officials to help be brand ambassadors so we don't have to do that constituent casework together. Everybody can, you know.
Okay. And so on record, you have to pay for the Verazano. No, I'm just kidding.
That's a larger conversation.
Just kidding. Just the, the last quick thing, and I think you folks kind of touched on it when Councilmember Narcisse was asking her questions around electric vehicles. Considering New York State's goal to phase out the sale of all gas-powered vehicles by 2035, how will congestion pricing aid New York drivers to be able to purchase and transition to electric vehicles if so? And will any of the proceeds from congestion pricing go to fund electric charging infrastructure? If we have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so importantly, for context, the goals of the, the Central Business District program are, first and foremost, to reduce congestion, and then, second, to raise the funding sufficient to fund the $15 billion in the capital program. The environmental benefit of improved air quality comes as a result of the, the two primary goals. In terms of electric vehicles, as I mentioned earlier, this is one of the items that's on that list of 122 potential exemptions, discounts, and credits that the Traffic Mobility Review Board is sifting through and determining what they're going to make recommendations on. As to the funding, it is required by law that we use the funding specifically, the net proceeds specifically, after paying for the cost of the program, to fund New York City Transit, Metro North, and Long Island Railroad in capital investments.
Okay, great.
I just want to add to that, too. Your question about electric charging infrastructure, the answer is yes. I mentioned the New Jamaica Bus Depot. That will be the first zero-mission-ready, entirely zero-mission-ready depot in our fleet. We have a significant number of zero-mission battery electric buses out for, have a bid out right now, an RFP, the largest in our history, I think the largest in the country. We received a significant federal grant for that as well. So yeah, it's one of the main focal points and beneficiaries from congestion pricing revenues in this capital.
I appreciate that response. I, I do just want to note that when I am asking questions around charging infrastructure, I'm mostly focused on what's the public use and availability? And if we're expecting drivers, like, for higher vehicles, to be able to transition their fleet and stay in business for themselves, like, we need public infrastructure, and right now we don't have that. So if down the line, MTA is planning to make some of their infrastructure open for public use, I'm interested in that conversation, but I appreciate the response.
Thank you so much to the MTA, and we appreciate you coming out. In terms of what the, the MTA is going to be looking to use that money for, I understand that a list, if, in some sort, was given to the state in terms of what some of those projects would be. So it would be great if it could be shared with the committee as well.
Are you, are you referring specifically to congestion pricing dollars or from, can you clarify that?
Yes, for the, because I asked earlier about the, how that money's going to be spent, what's going to be going to. So if I could get a list.
The answer's pretty simple. It's our MTA 2020-24 capital program, which is available online. The revenues from congestion pricing account for about 30% of that capital program. So you can review that capital plan. That's where you'll find that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to public testimony. We'll now turn to public testimony. Each panelist will be given two minutes to speak. For panelists testifying in person, please come to the dais as your name is called and wait for your turn to speak. For panelists who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Our first panel will be Erica Burson and Evelyn David. Thank you. You may begin when ready.
So I need just a couple of minutes owing to a disability that I have, but I'll make it as quick as I can. Chairperson Brooks Powers and other committee members, thank you for your time and attention. My name is Erica Burson. I am 54 years old and born and raised in Manhattan. And while I've lived in other places, including overseas, experiencing some of the best transit systems in the world, New York City is in my DNA. I live on 71st and 2nd, operate a single-person LLC. I'm losing a day of income to be here because it's so important to me. I come from a long line of New York City Democratic activists, and I also live with multiple sclerosis. For those of you not aware, severity of symptoms of MS can vary from person to person. My issues are with fatigue and extreme heat intolerance. I know that you can't see my MS, but I assure you, as I appear here today, in the dog days of summer and the planet's climate crisis, which I firmly believe in, my body is in turmoil. While I don't own a car, congestion pricing is going to negatively impact my and thousands of others' mobility and ability to participate in society. I believe in the possibility of our transit system, but I am unable to take it regularly because on any given day, I have to plan out the amount of energy I can use. I rely on taxis and other for-hire vehicles to get around, and currently, before the meteor even starts, the congestion fees can be $4, $6.50, et cetera. I also live in a neighborhood that has more hospitals and physician offices than anywhere in the country, bar none. Think about the millions of people who come to the East Side every year for their healthcare needs, people who can't take public transit, even if it exists where they live. I'm angry, not because I have MS, but that I have to come to your committee to beg you to care about me and others like me, beg you to care about not forcing me to limit my life to the blocks around my apartment because I can't afford the extra money that it will cost to get below 60th Street and back as needed. I pay $735 per month for commercial insurance through the exchange before even seeing a doctor, and one medicine for my MS is $88,000 per year. Living in Manhattan, we face taxes upon fees upon taxes like no other place. Most people that live in Manhattan are not wealthy. It's shocking to see the line items where the MTA gets money from, well beyond anything regulated related to transportation. My elected officials that I voted for, including Nadler, Seiright, Kruger, Levine, Lander, and men, and will not listen to those of us who oppose congestion pricing. There are twochange.org petitions that I'm aware of, with over 5,500 signatures and almost 300 comments opposing congestion pricing. In 2022, more than 1,100 MTA employees doubled or even tripled their salaries, costing taxpayers $1.3 billion in overtime, which was an increase of approximately 20% over 2021. I find it perplexing why other countries can create reliable transit systems on time and for a fraction of the cost of the MTA, also while using union workers. There is no way the MTA will make the money needed through congestion pricing because the research is based on pre-pandemic data and doesn't match up to the current working or driving conditions. As they say, the math ain't mathing. And nowhere in the MTA's project purpose, need, and objectives is the climate, crisis, and environment even mentioned. The purpose states, "To reduce traffic congestion in the Manhattan Central Business District in a manner that will generate revenue for future transportation improvements pursuant to exception, acceptance into FHWA's value pricing pilot program." If you reduce the amount of cars coming into the Central Business District, how does the MTA make the $15 billion it needs? Again, the math ain't mathing. This is more, this is nothing more than a money grab by a disorganized agency that has no idea how to manage projects and politicians that can't or won't hold them accountable. The Americans with Disabilities Act at 33 years old says that just by having a diagnosis of MS, I qualify as disabled, but based on the MTA's requirements, I do not. And shockingly, 33 years after the ADA became the law, the system is only hovering around 25% accessible, and on any given day with elevators and escalators out of service, much less. Why should I be forced to share my private health information with an incompetent city agency, asking me and my doctor to do senseless paperwork when this can be solved a dozen different ways off the top of my head alone that won't hurt all of us? If I had the money that other special interest groups have backing them, you would be hearing from me via lawsuit rather than sitting in front of you asking for you to protect us. We all know that each passing year, the CBD line will creep uptown along with the fare amounts. But I keep hearing, "We promise that there will be public comment periods scheduled," and so far, nothing. Yet no time was wasted putting up the tolling infrastructure over 60th Street on the east and west sides in the last few weeks. To me, that says, we don't have to listen and we don't care anyway. In closing, I urge, no beg you to go back to your colleagues and look at a different way forward that won't negatively impact our city, including working-class people, small business, people with disabilities, and those who will wake up tomorrow with one, and the elderly. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can hit the make button. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Evelyn David. I live in CB8, which is, actually, I live just above the 60th Street line. The stanchions over Park Avenue look like something out of Terminator's. You really need to go look. Park Avenue is landmarked, and when I saw these things, I was like, no, you can't be, you got to be kidding me, right? I thought it was going to be attached to light bulbs or something. No, it's a huge metallic thing over Park Avenue. CB8 is not in session right now. Wait till they come back. I'm just, morning, morning. Okay, so I'm going to start this with, this is not an air quality issue at all. It is a money issue. The plan will force more and more commuters to work from home, and the MTA will not reach its billion-dollar goal. We already know that. Those most affected by this will be the small business owners who have to enter the zone and then pass the cost on to consumers. Inflation goes up. What is the point? Okay, the MTA board overseeing congestion plan, and I listened to it all, okay, did not allow one person onto the board from Manhattan to represent the residents in the tolling district so they do not know or care about the unintended consequences of their decisions and/or whoever did this legislation. However, they are giving a vast amount of money, and I've heard $20 million, to Congressman Richie Torres's district in the Bronx, to the Bronx Councilwoman, to pay, not, not to her, but to pay for medical consequences the rerouted traffic will cause due to disastrous pollution problems that will be created. So they do know they are just pushing the congestion north and not solving the problems. If you have a problem, try to solve the problems. Community District 8 and 9 will be severely impacted by unbelievable traffic, pollution, and parking issues that already exist, created, that will be created. So they don't know they're just pushing congestion north. Please let me finish to avoid the, solution to the MTA's financial and pollution problems created by the 150,000 Ubers and Lifts and bike lanes that have narrowed streets and created traffic flow problems is simple. Build municipal parking lots in the outer boroughs, near the subway hubs. And in Manhattan, anywhere and everywhere, there is a vacant lot. I found dozens just tooling around. Commuters and drivers will immediately drive, be able to pay with EZ Pass, jump on the subways and buses. This will create huge increases in ridership on subways and buses and huge revenues from parking for the city slash MTA. And air pollution will dramatically go down. That's actually a solution to this huge problem, the entirety of it. Up in the Bronx, there are a lot of open spaces near the subway hubs. People coming over the bridge could park their cars and jump on the subways. And believe me, they would be so happy to do it. Nobody really wants to drive into Manhattan. Do you know what I mean? It's like, okay, please consider this is your chance to affect change and help solve the problems in a rational, practical, and realistic way. Thank you very much for your listening. Thank you. Attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next hear from Assemblyman Lesser Chang. You may begin when ready.
Certainly, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, to be hosting this, this committee. I know how it feels. Been that myself, too. And had I been in office earlier, I would have voted negative on congestion pricing. Unfortunately, I became a legislator only, only this year, but I would have voted negatively had I had the opportunity. I represent South Brooklyn. That's including Dr. Heights, Sunset Park, Borough Park, and Bensonhurst. And as a native-born Chinatown here, and I, and New York has morphed into three Chinatowns, Flushing, Sunset Park, and, and New York Chinatown. I feel congestion pricing will inherently will kill, I mean, literally kill, destroy New York City Chinatown, and it will definitely have unintended effect, will affect my constituents because we have businesses that intertwine between three Chinatowns. For example, we have private buses that goes between New York Chinatown, Sunset Park, and Flushing, and all three, and that will inherently will affect that. We have businesses. We have business people that have multiple businesses in three Chinatowns. And we haven't even considered that, too. Now, as a retired military, military intelligence, and I worked in the field of transportation, got my master's degree in SUNY Maritime College in transportation. And I look at this trying to simply, as a simple solution for this, we should have every bridge and tunnel pay a toll, no free, no free lunches, no free tolls. So they equalize the transportation mode. Second is pay one low price, perhaps double the subway tokens, maybe add a low premium. And then, then during the rush hour, put a little peak and off-peak times on that. So maybe $8 for, for coming incoming, or $5, whatever, or $7, whatever, to subway tokens. I know they're going up in prices tomorrow. And you double it as a peak and off-peak. So that would change the dynamics and the people coming into, to the city itself. But I fear, unfortunately, the genie's out of bottle, congestion pricing is going along, and the governor is enthusiastically pushing this plan. I fear that our three Chinatowns will be adversely impacted and neighborhoods surrounding, in particular CBD area, will be severely impacted by congestion pricing. I hope we have a chance to reverse this congestion pricing. I know MTA, my personal feeling, is an inept, inefficient, convoluted agency, and it's not very efficient. I would prefer MTA to be a public utilities, like Con Ed or National Grid, to run privately, privately, in more efficient way than it is right now. That's my personal feeling. And how have they have solved so far the uncollected tolls, hundreds of millions of dollars? I don't even know the exact money, and I don't know, they know exactly how much they're losing on, on fare beating, on license plate that being, being, that being altered, and fake paper license plate. How do we collect it? And you're right, C.M. Holden, because I seen those MTA cops sitting out there on, on those entrance, looking and not doing anything, no enforcement. And unfortunately, even our NYPD or the traffic enforcement, not doing, writing tickets on those altered plates. They have the authority to do it, but I don't see it done. That money we save can go towards the MTA. But I fear that this is a looming monster that will disrupt and destroy our neighborhoods who depended on free travel and trade. There would have to be a better way to congestion pricing, but not this way. And yes, I visit Singapore, London, on their congestion pricing because I'm in transportation. I travel there all the time. And they don't have neighborhoods like we do have, you know, interdependent neighborhoods with businesses. And we do have central business, but has altered. COVID have altered the business environment already. But anyway, so that's my, my speech, and, and just pay attention. Once this, once this can really come out, I fear that our business will be leaving, especially in the CDB area. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time, and I know this is a long process. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for participating today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Julian Wong, Britt Byrd, Nader Henry, and Wayne Chin. You may begin when ready.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Britt Byrd. I'm a planner in the office of Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso. I'm submitting this testimony on his behalf. Good afternoon, Chair Brooks Powers and members of the committee, and thank you for holding this hearing today on this extremely important issue. Congestion pricing has been a long time coming, nearly 15 years, and I'm very happy to see it finally moving forward. If we do it together and do it right, congestion pricing is set to be a win-win-win for our economy, environment, and people. It will boost our public transit, clean up our air, and make our streets safer. And we need it now. Soaring rates of car ownership and the dire fiscal needs of the MTA require urgency. But we cannot let urgency and spurious lawsuits get in the way of doing this right. We need a fair approach, which means a fee structure that provides as few exemptions as possible. In other words, a broad base coupled with a toll rate that does not disproportionately burden non-exempt drivers. We need to take seriously our responsibility to improving public health and addressing climate change by removing as many cars from our streets as possible. The vast majority of New Yorkers stand to benefit from essential investments to our transit system, such as improved signaling to make trains faster and more reliable, and installing new elevators to make more stations ADA accessible. New York is a transit-walking and cycling city. Of our over 8 million residents, only 5,200 New Yorkers live both more than a half mile away from transit and commute into the congestion zone by car. The revenue from congestion pricing will help improve transit in the outer boroughs and move us closer to a future where all New Yorkers live close to reliable transit. We need to eliminate the potential for toll shopping by equalizing fare structures across all crossings. Crossing the East River should not be the cheapest way for polluting and dangerous trucks and cars without a local destination to travel across our region. The Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Williamsburg bridges should be priced on par with the Verrazano and Triborough bridges so that through traffic, no longer burdens environmental justice communities in Brooklyn and lower Manhattan. And of course, we need to talk about our neighbors in the South Bronx. One of the most important outcomes for, of congestion pricing is reducing air pollution across our city. And we need to recognize that the environmental assessment identifies potential risks of truck emission increases for the South Bronx. This is an area that already battles poor air quality, high asthma rates, and other environmental injustices. It is vital that the MTA follows through on a substantial mitigation package that includes investments in open space, air filtration, truck electrification, and expanding DOT's off-hours truck delivery program. In summary, for our city to continue to function, we must get people out of their cars and back onto reliable public transportation. Congestion pricing is set to be mutually beneficial for the city and region's economy, transit system, traffic reduction efforts, and overall safety and quality of life for Brooklynites and all New Yorkers. Thank you again for holding this hearing today. I look forward to continuing to partner with the City Council, Albany, and the MTA to make our streets healthier and deliver world-class public transportation in Brooklyn.
Thank you. Do you have copies of your testimony? Are you able to submit it online?
I submitted online and provided a copy to the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Okay, thank you. Please, please go ahead when ready.
So thank you, council members, for speaking today. I'm here speaking about 390 today, about QueensLink. So I am a student studying transportation engineering in university at the moment. But more fundamentally, I'm a New Yorker whose family has never owned a car and who has never had experience or, you know, the opportunity to drive ever and has relied on public transportation ever since. And maybe even more fundamentally, I'm a human being who desires freedom of mobility. And I live in the Bay Ridge-Dyger Heights area, and I have many, many reasons to go out to Richmond Hill, Rego Park. I have volunteering opportunities in Richmond Hill pretty frequently. I have friends, family in, you know, eastern, central Queens. And it is a massive pain to get there at the moment. The J train is not, not nearly adequate enough to be serving that area for the, the demand of, for transportation to that area. And assuming all of these roles, a student in transportation engineering, a New Yorker, and, you know, just a person who just has a reason to be in, in those areas, you know, QueensLink is just a goldmine. We're just sitting on a goldmine here. We need to, you know, realize that we have such a valuable piece of transportation infrastructure that's readily available for us to convert to, you know, a usable rail corridor. And a common myth is that parks and, you know, rail corridors cannot coexist simultaneously along, you know, the same corridors. You know, seeing and participating in the work that QueensLink does, I know firsthand that it is extremely possible for the Long Island Railroad corridor, the disused Long Island Railroad corridor there, to house both an active rail corridor and, you know, a linear park. So I encourage everyone in the council to act upon this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair and all the city council. I'm a yellow cab driver, and I'm a member of NYTWA. And this is very hard for us, for the yellow cab, to, if we have to pay that congestion price. Come from 68th Street downtown, we already paid $2.50 plus 50 cents twice, that's $3 for MTA. We collect every fare we pick up. And so, I mean, a lot of time, we got a hard time because sometimes the passenger don't like the price. Because MTA, if we have to go with this, this is the end of yellow. I'm not saying the end, but it will go and be the end for the yellow cab. Because we cannot afford. I'm telling you right now, I have a big bill. The city, I mean, the city tried to help the yellow cab with the bill, but some lenders accept the deal and other lenders don't accept the deal. How this happen, few yellow cab very happy and other yellow cab is not happy because they didn't work for, for them. That's why right now adding more money to us, that make, that make more bill for us. Madam Chair, I ask you to see that and consider what you can do to prevent or spare this congestion price. And also, I will ask you if you can talk to every councilman, if they can see why some lenders accept the deal and some don't accept the deal. Because some, some yellow cab get help, some don't. That mean it's not fair. That mean, I will like you because when I was in the, when I was in the meeting of City Hall, the mayor, the Senator Schumer, they said they're going to help all the yellow cab who have problem with the, the bill. I mean, 30, 30, $30,000 city guarantee, but that never happened. That happened for a few driver, but they have 570 driver who don't have that deal. You know, it's very hard. And that's why I ask all of you to think about it or to find why that happen. And thank you very much for your help. Right.
Thank you for that. I do have follow-up questions if I can, just wanting to understand the impact more also because I do have concerns about the yellow taxicabs in particular having a double tax on them. In terms of what was shared earlier from the MTA about the yellow taxicabs and the FHVs having the tax one time per day versus each time in and out, what do you feel is a direct impact for you from first experience and what that means? Does that mean that you would avoid taking trips into the CBD and look elsewhere to pick up trips, or what would happen?
That's where, that's where the business is for yellow cab. If we can, if we avoid to come down, that mean, that the end of yellow cab, that the end of it. They have to find a way to exempt the yellow cab. We can come bring people because the business is down here. That's where we pick up downtown, bring uptown, 96th, come downtown, airport. That's what we do. That mean, and we are public transportation, you know? You have a problem, you come to the yellow cab. And yellow cab is the culture of New York. It's the culture, that's the, that's, I don't know what to say. It's a culture. You look, if you know yellow cab in the city, well, how you the city look like? I mean, come on, that kind of destroy a yellow cab. It make no sense.
No, thank you for that. And I agree, like, the yellow cab is an iconic feature of New York City, and we recognize the troubles that have been happening. And I hope we have you in the fall when we have another hearing that's going to be specific to the TLC.
I'd be pleased.
To really talk about the program that's in place right now because I hear you saying, like, not everyone took advantage of it and that there are reasons. So in the fall, there'll be an opportunity to really delve into that. So I appreciate your testimony.
Okay, I'd be pleased to be here, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Wayne Chin, also a member of New York Taxi Work Alliance. Yeah, I've been driving yellow for over 20 years. You know, we've been paying MTA 50 cents from 2009, and the NDA added another tax congestion charge on 2019. So we paying $3, they collecting and paying $3 each right in Manhattan. So the total come to like, average total is like $15,000 a year, you collecting and paying MTA. And if they add another third, third fee or tax on the yellow, we very impact our income because the customer base is not back to normal, to the pandemic level yet. We still have a less passenger than before pandemic. You know, it will impact our income very much. So all the, most of the medallion owner, they have a loan. As you all know, we, 2021, we demonstrated outside the City Hall for 46 days. We have a loan refresher that the mayor, the legislature, agree to refresher the loan. The mayor done, last year, they started refresher the loan. But we still have 170,000 loan on the medallion, most of the medallion. But some of the medallion owner, like I said, they don't have a loan refresher yet. You know, we still waiting for the refresher. If they add another tax on that, I don't know, I don't think we can survive. All the owner, you know, because we already paying our share to the MTA already, we don't need additional fee or tax either on the driver or, or the passenger, you know? So we ask for your head to get exemption, no, no new fee on the driver or the passenger. We already paying our share, $3 fare on, on the MTA, you know, $15,000 a year average, you know, paying then. So let us survive, let us live, let us provide our kid, to our family. Also, you know, we are essential part of New York City. You know, we provide door-to-door service to the elderly people, disabled people. We are walking 24 hours a day. Most of our cab driver, they walking day, night shift, rain or shine. MTA, the train not running, we are running. During storm, we are walking. So please, help exempt for the new fee and taxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now call our next panel. Andrew Schloss, Tiffany Ann Taylor, Elizabeth Adams, and Dan Rodriguez.
And as the next panel is coming up, I just want to reiterate that the City Council does not have the authority in terms of exemptions, as it was stated in the hearing earlier. So I just want to make sure that we're being clear in the separations of roles.
Please turn on the microphone.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and esteemed members of the council. My name is Andrew Schloss. I'm a New York City-based transit-riding urban planner, and I work for Flix North America, which operates two intercity bus brands in New York City, Flix Bus and Greyhound Lines. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to speak on this policy. I'm here to represent Flix and Greyhound and express our sincere belief that intercity buses, as a vital part of the solution to congestion and climate change, should be exempt from the Central Business Tolling, excuse me, Central Business District tolling program. We are proud to call New York our home and to provide vital connections from Manhattan to hundreds of destinations throughout the country, along with our partners in the industry. Flix is proud to support this policy as it advances our shared commitment to ensure a green and smart transportation future for all New Yorkers. We believe that exempting intercity buses from the We believe that exempting intercity buses from the program is key to making it a success. Firstly, a robust intercity bus service is one of the best ways to fight congestion. Each intercity bus can take at least 50 single occupant vehicles out of the CBD's roadways. Second, numerous studies have shown that intercity buses are the most energy efficient and environmentally beneficial mode of motorized passenger transportation. These studies demonstrate that intercity buses use the least amount of energy and produce the lowest carbon dioxide emissions per passenger mile of any motorized transportation mode. The studies include Getting There Greener by the Union of Concerned Scientists, an updated comparison of energy use and emissions from different transportation modes by MJBNA in June of 2019. Additionally, we believe that exempting intercity buses would allow the policy to best advance environmental justice. Persons in minority populations and low-income persons rely on intercity bus service for much of their transportation. Additionally, Greyhound's passenger profile illustrates this point. Greyhound is a majority and minority bus service provider. In a survey conducted in 2019, prior to the pandemic, Greyhound found that 50%, 56% of its passengers were members of ethnic minorities and 57% of its ridership is low-income. Finally, federal law requires that privately operated over-the-road buses be treated the same way as public transportation buses in FHWA-sponsored projects like the CBTP. And that requirement should mean that all buses, both transit and intercity, should be exempt from CBTP tolls. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment on this policy and yeah, looking forward to hear more.
Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
You may go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. Hello and thank you to the chair and committee for holding this hearing today. My name is Tiffany Ann Taylor and I am Vice President for Transportation at the Regional Plan Association. I am also representing the Congestion Pricing Now Coalition, which includes dozens of civic, community, transit, and environmental groups that support congestion pricing. We support improving the bus and bike networks of the city as this program advances and look to your support to ensure the Streets Master, Street Master Plan is implemented. We would also like to support on five recommendations we have shared with the Traffic Mobility Review Board. First, use bridge and tunnel toll credits to reduce excess travel, especially through environmental justice communities. By equalizing tolls across all entry points, we can reduce toll shopping by incentivizing drivers to take the most direct route. This will require the program to consider other MTA and Port Authority toll credits. Second, with four higher vehicles, we think the program should assess a per-ride surcharge paid by the passenger rather than once-per-day toll paid by the driver. A per-ride surcharge, surcharge paid by passengers will reduce financial burdens for drivers while creating a new revenue stream. We do not believe this per-trip surcharge should apply to taxis given their existing financial burdens. Third, both public and private commuter buses should be exempt from tolls. We should be encouraging the use of public and private bus fleets that connect riders to intermodal transportation hubs within the zone. Fourth, no additional exemptions should be granted beyond commuter buses and the legislatively mandated exemptions. Any exemptions beyond these recommendations and commitments made by the MTA earlier this year will raise the base toll paid by drivers and deteriorate the effectiveness of the program. And fifth, trucks and large vehicles should pay a per-axle toll. These vehicles have a greater impact on our infrastructure and health and should pay more based on their size and weight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Just a follow-up question. When you talk about transferring the cost from the driver to the passenger, are you talking about the full tax to the passenger?
Yes, the additional charge, yes.
So hypothetically, if the tax was to be $23, you would want a passenger to pay $23 on top of the trip?
Yes. Well, I, if I can respectfully remind council that the 23, again, this is a hypothetical situation. Under the environmental assessment, the range proposed was nine to $23. Also, in the environmental assessment, four higher vehicle drivers and taxi drivers were recognized as environmental just, members of environmental justice communities as well. So we want to make sure that we're not suggesting something that would be an additional tax on that community. And that's why we're suggesting a per-trip surcharge of which the, the customer would pay.
And then just staying in alignment with the hypotheticals for like seniors. So right now, we know that there's going to be a low-income carve-out and a disability carve-out, however they decide to let that play out. But for example, like seniors or folks who have, who need medical treatment, right? Because like in my district, we are not only a transit desert, but also a healthcare desert as well, where we don't have a trauma hospital in my district. When I was pregnant, I had to take a cab into the city to get to my hospital. And so I just am wondering, like, how do you think through for those respective groups as well? Because when you think about the communities such as, as I mentioned earlier today, Canarsie or Southeast Queens, where the transportation infrastructure has not been expanded in decades, how do you envision for those commuters to get there?
I think it's important to recognize that there have been improvements that have been made in the transit system, system-wide. And congestion pricing is another way to make sure that there is dedicated funding for capital projects to expand other parts of the system. You heard earlier MTA testimony on things like the Interboro Express, Second Avenue Subway, other station upgrades. And then also making sure that there are continued investments in the current bus system, right? There is a distinction between perhaps a rail desert and a true transit desert. Some of the communities that you're talking about fall into different categories as well.
They actually fall into both. But go ahead.
Agreed. And I would also say that there is, there should be an additional push that perhaps expands beyond this particular hearing and also beyond the policy of congestion pricing itself on what can we do to make sure that there are additional programs, discounted programs that folks can participate in as it relates to using public transportation systems. So folks are perhaps members of the disability community or senior citizens who may also qualify on the other underprograms that maybe they're not able to take advantage of or maybe unaware of, that there is still opportunity to make sure that folks are fully enrolled. So a great example of that is something like a Fairfares program, which I know although the city has graciously added additional funding for, still has not reached maximum capture rate for, for riders. So making sure that there are still continued investments in other programs to support that system as well.
No, and I think that your response just now is in line with what I was stating all along, which is we have to look at other potential exemptions to make sure that marginalized groups are not further left behind. And in terms of like the investments that the MTA has shared earlier today, while they have made a lot of great strides, there has been no expansion of any system in terms of rail in parts of the city that most need it. And they still need more bus frequency, for example. So there's a lot of work to be done. The MTA is in the right direction for sure, but I think it's important when we have these conversations to think about the reality of today. We, we know what we're looking to move towards, but we can't move towards it while leaving a whole community behind. That's what Robert Moses did and that's what we cannot afford to do.
Agreed. Thank you for your comments and the time this afternoon.
Thank you. And it's nice seeing you person.
Same here.
My name is Dan Rodriguez and I am before you as a representative of Coach USA, its subsidiaries, and of the Bus Association of New Jersey, of which I am president of. I would like to thank the chair and the members of the committee for this opportunity to address you today. Coach USA is one of the largest transportation operators in North America. We operate more than 2,500 buses and coaches, employ thousands of transportation professionals across the United States and Canada. We provide critical local and intercity transport services for communities throughout the New York metropolitan area. Our services are particularly crucial for a diverse range of economically vulnerable families who rely on affordable transportation to access work opportunities in Manhattan, who on average pay $10.57 for travel into the congestion district, making it the most affordable and in some cases, the only mode of transportation available to them. In total, Coach USA operates more than 25 bus carriers that operate scheduled bus routes, motor coach tours, airport shuttles, and charters. The bus routes operated by Coach USA subsidiaries include private passenger service as well as federally funded public transit service, including our service throughout New York. Thus, while a private carrier, we are fundamentally intertwined with public transit bus service in the New York region. Among our subsidiaries, Megabus, a noteworthy intercity motor coach service launched in April 2006. Megabus focuses on the Northeast and provides daily express service with fares as low as $1. With 196 daily routes and four Manhattan stops, Megabus facilitates travel to various destinations in New York and beyond. The relationship between Megabus and Manhattan is crucial as it benefits our passengers who depend on affordable and efficient transportation to the New York metropolitan area. Congestion toll pricing is what economists call a demand-side solution. Raise the price of something and demand will fall, resulting in less congested streets and improved air quality. However, this approach, while also trying to maximize revenue, makes it tricky, especially when it's to lower the current 43 billion-dollar deficit the MTA is currently grappling with. I want to emphasize and make clear that we are committed to addressing New York's traffic congestion concerns. Through our public transportation services, we transport 24,000 passengers daily and over 8 million annually, thus removing an equivalent of 8 million cars from Manhattan streets every year.
I'm sorry. I'm just going to ask if you could give us the abbreviated version. We do have it for the record, though.
Sure. As, as most of our riders are essential members of New York City's daily life, including first responders, healthcare workers, and union workers. Additionally, 83% of New York voters say that public transportation provides easy access to the things they rely on their daily lives, which they may not have access to otherwise, according to the New York Public Transit Association. In recognition of these invaluable public benefits served by our bus services and to prevent operational disruptions from congestion tolls, we urge the MTA, the board, and the Traffic Mobility Review Board to exempt buses from the program's tolls, such as in London, Stockholm, and Singapore, which already adopt this approach. No bus in these cities is required to pay a toll. This promotes bus ridership, which in turn reduces passenger cars and the resulting environmental impacts, while also boosting economic activity. There is a reason that these cities concluded that buses are to be exempt from tolling and a contradictory conclusion should not be reached here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For our next panel, please come up Susan Lee, Alia Somprow, Zach Milli, and Gregor Winko. Please begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairwoman, for having this hearing. My name is Susan Lee. I am the founding president of the Alliance for Community Preservation and Betterment. I'm a resident of Lower Manhattan and a constituent of Councilmember Christopher Marte. I'm here to testify against congestion pricing. We've heard from various council members and speakers that this congestion price, pricing tag is a recess, regressive tax, a tax on the working class and those who at least afford it. Instead, I will use my time to speak about the lack of real community engagement from the MTA Traffic Mobility Board. In the press release issued by the MTA on August 21st, 2022, titled Reminder: Public Hearings on the Proposed Congestion Pricing Program Begins This Thursday, August 25th. This was a press release issued in 2022. All the dates listed were in August for public comment period. Hosting public comment periods in the summer is unproductive and robs our residents the opportunity to provide meaningful feedback. I was one of those who were on vacation during this time last year and I remember I was in Denver Airport frantically texting members of my WhatsApp group about the hearing and that members who are in the city and are available should dial in and comment. I called into one of those sessions on August 25th and listened while I sat at the waiting area to board my airplane. Unfortunately, like all hearings, like this one today, that lasted several hours, I didn't have the opportunity to provide my public comment because I had to board my airplane. When agency conducts half-baked hearings under the guise of community engagement, when the community are not available to participate, it is merely just checking off the box that they engage with the community and the work is done. And lastly, for the record, MTA did not reach out to the Chinese ethnic media about these public hearings. For the record, I called Sing Dao Newspaper, one of the largest Chinese paper in New York City along the Eastern Corridor, and their ad manager told me that MTA did not place an ad about any of the public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion here. Actually, I changed my, my, my line out, what I worked out here a little bit according to what I heard. So first of all, my impression is everything is a little backward here. There are so many open questions actually, and I'm actually hopeful to see that some of the council members are not supporting congestion pricing. Actually, I'm surprised about it, but hopefully that gets somewhere. In that sense, I think the process is backward because there are so many open questions that actually need to be, would have needed to be clarified before a decision is made about to implement congestion pricing. I'm, yeah, okay, it has gone already very far. Second, actually, I feel as someone who relies on a car, a little bit like a raw piece of meat that is thrown in front of an angry wolf and the angry wolf is actually the MTA and I'm the driver, the piece of meat. Okay, let me go to what I think about this congestion pricing. I mean, you see that I'm testifying against it already. I think the, first of all, the idea is absurd if you think about it. First, at the same time, you want as less drivers as possible in the congestion zone. On the other side, you want at the same time, actually, you want to maximize the number, but it has been said already to increase, to have a maximum, maximum revenue maxed, maxed out. This is on the side. I want to especially focus on that this congestion pricing is extremely socially unjust and I'm surprised that Democrats have pushed that actually forward. But anyhow, it is socially unjust insofar that it hits actually people from the low, lower income and borderline medium income, income group, yeah? These are people that have reasons that they have to come to drive into the city and it's just put on their shoulders to finance the MTA. How did that idea came up actually? That would need to be brought. For that reason, I think actually the whole thing needs to be stopped. Unfortunately, it's pretty much in motion already, but the only thing that can be done because the whole thing is complete. because the whole thing is completely not thought well through. It's not a viable solution to solve the transportation problem that needs to be canceled. I hear a lot about people that they want to be exempt. The problem with exemption, I see, is first you have to pay the tax, first you have to pay the toll, and then you hope that according to your income, you might get your tax recurrent. But if you do some overtime, then suddenly you might go a little over the threshold, and then you don't receive your money back. I just want to mention as well that these $5,000 to $6,000, that's a lot of money for people that are poor or that are medium income, and that has certainly not been considered. Yeah, this is pretty much what I want to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I hope the council members, maybe they consider to stop this congestion pricing. It's really unfair to the lower class.
Thank you. We need to go to the next person. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairbrooks Powers and members of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. My name is Zach Miller, and I am the Director of Metro Region Operations for the Trucking Association of New York. I thank you for convening this critical oversight hearing. I'd like to focus my testimony both on refuting some of the claims made by the MTA and the environmental assessment, as well as offering some suggestions that this body has sway over to. So first and foremost, the claim that cost of a new toll would not result in changes in the cost of most consumer goods is absurd. In making this claim, the EA states that trucking companies would pass along the cost of the new toll to multiple customers since trucks make multiple deliveries, therefore minimizing the cost to any individual business. The EA fails to recognize that businesses frequently receive multiple deliveries a day. Restaurants, for example, may receive one delivery with produce, one delivery with beverages, one delivery with meats, and another delivery with linens and supplies all on the same day. Each of these deliveries will be more expensive because of the CBD toll, and in aggregate will create significant increased costs on everything businesses rely on to operate. Mind you, trucking companies already pay a congestion tax to operate in New York City that passenger vehicles do not in the form of the Commercial Vehicle Tax, or CMVT. This $400 tax per truck equates to tens of thousands of dollars per company annually in addition to being an administrative burden. Eliminating this tax will help mitigate congestion pricing costs from being passed on. In addition to the CMVT, commercial vehicles are also subject to highway use tax, which imposes a tax on every mile a vehicle operates in New York, including New York City. Passenger vehicles are not subject to this tax. As it pertains to the 50% discount on off-peak tolls, Tanny does not believe this will have a significant impact on shifting truck traffic to off-peak periods. Trucking companies do not determine the time of day that they travel, the businesses they service do. According to NYC DOT, 80% of all commercial activity is between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, with the peak between 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM. This is when businesses are open and receive their deliveries. If professional drivers do not have deliveries to make during off-peak hours or have a safe place to park to stage for delivery, next day there is no incentive for them to travel off-peak hours. Well, that went by pretty quickly, didn't it? I think just one other thing to raise is that in Manhattan, there still is clear lanes, clear curbs. This was originally put in in Manhattan, in Queens, and in Brooklyn as an alternative to congestion pricing. It is no longer in place in Queens or in Brooklyn, but it is still in Manhattan. We feel with congestion pricing coming in as well as Broadway Vision and some of these other street changes that clear lanes, clear curbs is obsolete, and it would really make deliveries flow more efficiently when congestion pricing comes in.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alia Sumro, and I'm the Deputy Director for New York City Policy at the New York League of Conservation Voters. Thank you, Chairbrooks Powers and members of the Transportation Committee on Transportation for the opportunity to testify today. I have submitted longer written comments. Congestion in New York City's Central Business District contributes to delays for emergency vehicles, buses, delivery vehicles, and drivers. Compounding this, decades of disinvestment in our public transit system has led to an unreliable and inaccessible system. NYLCV is a longstanding advocate of congestion pricing and is a member of the Congestion Pricing Now Coalition. New York's congestion pricing program is required to generate at least $1 billion annually for the MTA's capital program, bringing in historic investments to modernize and update our public transportation system, including our subway's aging signal system, 100% electric buses, improvements to Metro North and Long Island railroads, as well as long-needed accessibility improvements such as elevators and ramps. Congestion pricing will also help New York meet its statutory obligations under the CLCPA, a state law which calls for cutting greenhouse gas emissions. This program is a win for the region because it will fund public transit, reduce traffic congestion, improve air quality and public health, and help our state meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals. With that said, as we near the implementation of this program, NYLCV has outlined several transportation policy recommendations for the city to prioritize in order to make this program most effective for New Yorkers. Here are a few. First, we need to timely implement the New York City Streets Plan that would improve and expand public transportation options, including busways and bike lanes throughout the city. Second, we need to prioritize improving bus service. This includes but is not limited to expediting routes in communities with the longest and slowest bus commutes. Third, we need to prioritize projects that will improve accessibility in the short term. DOT should immediately start planning a citywide accessibility network for safe routes for schools and safe routes for seniors. And lastly, we encourage the City Council to pass Intro 417 of 2022, a bill that would streamline notification process for street safety and traffic improvement measures. To ensure that this program is the first in the nation, is most effective for New Yorkers, we urge the city to adopt the policy recommendations I've outlined in my written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Councilmember Holden, you have questions?
Yes, I just want to ask you a question. By the way, is the MTA, anybody from the MTA still here? So you see how they're listening. I just want to ask you a question, your organization, since you are higher up in the conservation voters. When I brought up the fact that there's no environmental impact study, which is a, you know the difference between the assessment and the impact. The assessment takes all of 30 days maybe to complete, if that. I've never seen a negative one be issued. First of all, the assessment, you're almost paying for that organization to say yes. If you look at the success rate of an environmental assessment study, it's like 99.9%. They're going to say, it's great. Your organization has a chance here to say, we need an impact study to protect the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted, because you're just going to shift traffic. And those neighborhoods have a problem now with health. So what does your organization say? Why wouldn't you push for, in your recommendations, impact study?
Well, I can't speak to the EIS versus EA, but I can say that we support the mitigation measures that the MTA, city, and state have committed recently, especially the ones in the South Bronx, but we still encourage the city to have those types of environmental justice mitigation measures throughout the city. That includes having a clean truck program and electrifying vehicles at Hunts Point and planting more trees and vegetation around highways. I mean, we definitely are in favor of that throughout the city.
I understand that, but if you get a lot more congestion in those neighborhoods, like gridlock, that's not helping anyone. And if, so if you did an impact study, you'd find that out. You would really get that information, because they would really do over maybe a year or a year and a half study to go over this. So I would think, and I expected to be in your testimony, that you should want and push for an environmental impact study because that's what you're about. You should want an exhaustive study. So I would bring that back to your organization. And on the truckers, by the way, everyone knows prices are going to go up, and we're going to realize higher costs for everything that trucks bring in. Everyone knows that except the MTA. So I, you know, I wanted somebody to say it. I'm glad you said it, because it is an issue, and every business knows this. And surprise, the MTA doesn't know that.
No, that was the line that I highlighted here, that we read that in the Fonzie, and we were just like, how can they actually say there's no impact when they talk about from the, you know, the trucking end? It's like, well, they make multiple deliveries. It's like, yeah, and receivers get multiple deliveries. Like, that's how it works. So, yeah.
That's basic, you know, capitalism 101, that you're going to pass the cost of any your costs are going to, you're not going to, you know, bear the brunt. You're going to pass it over to consumers. But, and again, why the MTA is not advertising anywhere, you know, especially the neighborhoods that will be impacted, is because they're demonstrating today they don't care. They're not here. They don't want to listen to you. Thank you.
Please, no clapping. You'll be asked to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. You can begin when ready.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to meet you in person. You and I have spoken on the phone about the Longfellow Tower and other matters. My name is Valerie Mason, and I'm the President of the East 72nd Street Neighborhood Association, as well as a co-founder of the Coalition in Opposition to Congestion Pricing. Unfortunately, I understand that the City Council can't do anything about this congestion pricing plan, and they have no leverage or no authority to talk about exemptions and other parts. I found the testimony this morning of the representatives of the MTA to continue to be less than transparent and very, let's say, disingenuous. They talk about now that the reason for congestion pricing is to stop or mitigate congestion. I don't see anywhere in the Charter of the MTA that it is their prerogative to administer and oversee congestion on the streets of New York City. This congestion pricing is a cash grab. That is all it is. It has nothing to do with reducing pollution. It has nothing to do with reducing congestion. For the program to be effective, congestion has to happen. What I'm asking is because this law was passed in 2019, here we are, less than 300 days from implementation, and what we heard today is everything is in progress. What I'm asking the City Council to do is to pass a resolution asking the state government to put a pause on where this program is, so that there can be a complete environmental assessment, a complete look at what the detrimental effects of this program are going to be on New York City. I would like our electeds to see that the emperor is naked. The people see it. We want our electeds to see that. I just want to end by saying that I got down here in an Uber from the Upper East Side. It took 17 minutes, okay? I talked to the driver in the car. I told him where I was going. He said, you know, I'm getting out of this business. I've been in it for over 20 years. 70% of all my fares go to the government or the MTA. I can't make ends meet. We need our working-class New Yorkers to make New York City continue to be the city that it is. And I applaud the Chair for her questions of the MTA. I grew up in Queens. I know it's a transportation desert. This island of Manhattan has to be accessible to all residents of the City of New York and metropolitan areas. The effect of congestion pricing will make Manhattan an island for the wealthy and healthy, and that is everything that this city has been against since I was born here many years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Thank you. My name is Irving Lee. I'm kind of the exception to the rule. I just want to tell you for the record, I was a member of Local 100, TW Local 100. I'm an ex-transit worker. I was a SOA motorman and conducted for 32 years. So I've worked the system. I've seen the structures. I've walked the structures in my career. I retired in 2016, and I'm clearly for building mass transit. I'm for capital projects, but I don't think congestion pricing, and I know congestion pricing is not the solution, because the amount of revenue necessary to rebuild our structure and to expand our mass transportation is going to far exceed the incomes that are needed to be provided. It really takes federal intervention, just like we have federal intervention for wars, to pay for wars. We really need federal intervention to pay for the expansion. It really cannot come from the working public, because there's not going to be enough. And then what's going to happen is that you're going to reduce businesses. That's how you're going to get congestion priced. That's when you're going to get congestion down, is that you're going to reduce businesses, put businesses out of business, and that's going to reduce congestion. I mean, that's going to, you know, reduce congestion. So that's really what the problem is. It's a contradictory business model. Now, living in Chinatown, I'm also, besides being an ex-union member, I was an elected representative of Local 100. I'm also a small business owner, small property owner in Chinatown, and I can see the long-term consequences if this congestion pricing takes place. A lot of businesses in Chinatown will be greatly affected. Doctors' offices will be affected because many of their patients rely on cars to get into the city, and they will lose many of the businesses as a consequence. So this will have negative, long-term consequences. And I believe that a lot of the studies that were made for congestion pricing were fundamentally dishonest, including the Regional Planning Association, who just testified. They never take into account the one-way tolls that were in place at the time of the Verizon and Narrows Bridge that created additional congestion through Manhattan that was never taken into account, nor the expansion of Lyft and Uber. Not that I'm saying we're against it, but there was never taken into account, there was never an honest assessment, and also the negative consequences of congestion pricing. And I think the rules that are in place, that it's being proposed, is fundamentally racist, because at no point MTA went to the community, went to my community especially, and asked, what do you think about this? What do you think about the consequences of your business? And they never, they never came to us. So I think at the end of the day, I think it takes federal intervention and not taxation, because taxation means a decline in business, and that's a contradictory business model for us, and it will have a negative effect for New York City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, here we go. Good afternoon, Chairbrooks Powers and Committee. Thank you for having us. My name is Patrick Condrin. I am lifelong in the motor coach and bus business here in New York City, a resident of Community Board Eight in the Upper East Side, born and raised in Brooklyn, and formerly one of the bus operators, franchise bus company operators for many years here in New York City. I represent Academy Bus, Hampton Jitney, and Big Bus, but I'm here today as the administrative of the Bus for NYC Coalition, which is a group of operators in the metropolitan New York area in local transit, commuter, charter, tour, sightseeing, airports, et cetera. I'd like to make the following comments quickly. The private and publicly owned buses carry the same writing, public, period. There's no difference of who gets on a bus. A bus is defined as over 15 passengers in New York City, in Traffic Rules of New York City, Section 34, period. The MTA Central Business District Tolling Plan Environmental Assessment Program, I was involved in several of the working group committees, clearly identifies scenarios that include tolling scenarios that include buses being exempt. We support congestion pricing as congestion mitigation, not pricing. We support the fact that anything over 15, like Stockholm, London, and Oslo and other places exempt buses, because there's no replication for replacing 50 people on a bus and 50 cars. Run 10 buses, that's 550 cars, and 500 cars out of 1,000. So fast forward, a bus is environmentally clean. It's the best for all, clean air, emissions, et cetera. Private and public operating agencies carry the same writing, public. We look forward to working as we are the backup system for the MTA, because when the MTA was going to shut down the subway system, I'm the one who got the call from Pep Boy. How many buses could the private industry come up with if they shut down the subway system? When the Long Island Railroad and other operations in the New York metropolitan area shut down at the airports, you hear it on 1010 winds. Don't worry, there'll be buses available for you. We're the ones who come up with it. Having said that, we're not in a garage revving our ranges waiting to be called. We're here to serve. We're here to be in business. We're here to be efficient, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Committee on Transportation and
Good afternoon, Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, and Members of the Public. My name is Brianna Carvahal, State Legislative Manager at We Act for Environmental Justice. We are a community-based organization in Harlem, fighting racial discrimination in environmental policymaking for over 35 years. And I am here today to say that we need congestion pricing. 82% of minority workers commute to the Manhattan CBD by transit, and 77% of people in Manhattan do not have access to a car. Low-income New Yorkers are heavily dependent on a reliable transit system, but our trains and buses used by the majority of communities are in urgent need of upgrades. Congestion pricing offers so many benefits to our communities' needs and wants. It offers the potential to fund improvements to infrastructure for pedestrians with disabilities, more covered bus stops, subway station accessibility in disadvantaged communities, the expansion of safe infrastructure for biking options, and the reclamation of car space, an increase in green infrastructure for reduced pollution and extreme heat, more electric buses on the road, hyper-local community air monitoring, among so many more community-based solutions. The solutions I just listed were lists created by our membership in Harlem. Ultimately, we view congestion pricing as an exceptional and important opportunity to address transit issues that have burdened our communities for decades. We are looking for the tolling program not only to reduce traffic, improve air quality, and raise funds for public transportation, but we want to see the implementation of many projects in environmental justice communities that reduces the current environmental burden that exists. We Act will be submitting written testimony after the hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Felicia Park Rogers, Phil Wong, Richard Chow, and Norman Buena Ventura.
Hello?
You can begin.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chair and Committee. My name is Richard Chow. I'm proud to be a New York Taxi Worker and Union Member. I've been driving taxis for 17 years. I am owner-driver. Since 2009, taxi paid to the MTA 50 cents. Second time, 2019, $2.50. Total $3 each trip given to the MTA. Average driver paid $15,000 every year to the MTA. We already paid our share. Now another time to pay $23 a day costs us $8,000 a year. This is, we cannot survive. It's unaffordable. Already taxis are paid more than $1 billion to the MTA, close to $2 billion. Taxi driver, both passenger should be exemption from the congestion price. Past few years, we taxi driver have a financial hardship. Nine drivers committed suicide, thousands of five bankruptcy. We just barely survive. And thanks to my union president, Barry Desai, and our nation's most powerful senator, Chuck Schumer, help us to fight the debt forgiven and the city bank guarantee. So we are from a city, we structure my loan $170,000. We stay struggling to hide debt. We taxi driver, working class of people, paycheck to paycheck. We are part of the transportation of New York City, and we are essential worker surviving, serving in New York City 24/7, blackout, city, Sandy Storm, pandemic. We take the best patient to the hospital from patient, take the hospital to go back to their home and delivery, food delivery, door-to-door service. During the pandemic time, we did our best part of, we never forget. We learned a lot from the UK, London. Good things, London streets, less than 30% traffic moving well. London taxis exemption the congestion pricing. New York City also, both driver or passenger should be exemption the congestion pricing. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and respected panels. My name is Norman Buena Ventura, and I've been driving a yellow cab for like 12 years. And prior to that, back in the 90s, I did the black car industry. So I kind of know how the industry works. With that in say, we are asking for an exemption for this congestion pricing, just for a few reasons, or a couple of reasons, I should say. Number one is like we are barely making as it is, because now the industry is not the same. We are practically scraping the bottom of the pot just to get by. And as it is, this is, I don't mind showing you, like this is my bank account right now, and as it says here, I have like $1,231.25. And I have yet to make another $3,000 for this month, just so I can pay my mortgage, my medallion mortgage, my utility bills. So with this, the other day, I made like $8, $9. That's what came into my account. And with that $8, $9, the MTA already took about, I'd say about $30, $40 on that. So with this, there's no way we can survive. And it's kind of like hard to accept the fact that we are working hard, if not harder, just to provide for our family, and this is what we're getting in return. And this is just so unfair in so many ways. And for me personally, I grew up in Brooklyn, and I wanted to send my kids to college, you know, so at least they can have a decent, whatever it is that you can call decent way of living, you know, with the things that are happening now, that, you know, MTA just wants to take, 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 and take. But meanwhile, they don't want to give. On my part, after my shift, when I'm all said and done, and I see someone hailing on the street, I would stop in front of them, and I would tell them, like, listen, my shift is already finished, but if you're going my way, I don't mind giving a free ride. Never once I heard the MTA gave us a free ride. But meanwhile, now they want to tax us again on top of what we're paying for. On myself alone, since I started driving the yellow cab, I must have to pay or contribute to the MTA like around $10,000, $10,000, probably like $100,000 to $150,000. That should have been in my pocket. That should have been my kid's college fund. But yet they're taking that away from us. Now with this congestion pricing, they're basically telling us, and for my kids, it's okay, you don't need breakfast. It's okay, you don't need lunch. It's okay, you don't need dinner. That is so unfair. My kids don't deserve that. And we are asking for this, not for ourselves, but for our kids, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Please no clapping. Last warning.
Good afternoon, and thank you for providing this opportunity to discuss the merits of congestion pricing. My name is Felicia Park Rogers, and I am the Director of Regional Infrastructure Projects at Tri-State Transportation Campaign. For 30 years, TSTC has been working to bring better transit, transportation, and streets, because better regional transportation is key to improving the environment and equity. Everybody here wants the same thing, a city that is vibrant, livable, economically thriving, and that serves as a potent metropolis that fosters and nurtures the people who live, work, and visit. Key to achieving those goals is making it safe, easy, and economical for people to get from point A to point B. Congestion pricing is a method to achieve these goals. Its basic premise is simple: discourage unnecessary car trips and make travel by transit, bicycle, and foot better and more convenient. Reducing car congestion improves public health, slows climate change, and makes for more efficient use of highly limited street space in a city where every inch of ground is a highly valuable commodity. The funds raised by congestion pricing are mandated by state law to total $1 billion a year. These funds are mandated to be used for the MTA capital budget, which includes important transit improvements such as more elevators, faster subways, electric bus conversion, and extending the Second Avenue subway. The 2024 capital plan is ambitious and detailed, and will vastly improve mass transit for millions of New Yorkers and people who come to work and play here. It is the job of the MTA to implement those improvements as quickly and efficiently as possible. But that is only the beginning of the story of what congestion pricing can bring. It is the job of the city to make streets work better for us. The City Council, the Mayor, and the New York City Department of Transportation have an incredible opportunity before you. If cars are taking up less space on our crowded streets, what will fill that space? What is your plan to improve the street use? Last year, the City Council and Mayor passed its ambitious Master Streets Plan. This plan creates an exciting vision of streets that are safe, accessible, enjoyable for use by majority of users, pedestrians, cyclists, transit users. Today, I urge you to walk through the door that congestion pricing is opening and begin the worthwhile and hard work of transforming our city's streets by implementing your streets plan. The reward will be felt instantly by your constituents and will last for generations to come. Today is the day to take back our streets and return them to the children, seniors, commuters, and travelers who need them most. And Councilmember, I did have a point of clarification on a question you asked Tiffany earlier. Tri-State is also a member of the Congestion Pricing Now Coalition, and if I understood correctly, you are asking if the recommendation that we have about a surcharge for higher vehicles and taxi drivers be the same as the toll?
No, no, no. She made a mention in her remarks that it would be applied to the passenger.
Yes. Our recommendation as a coalition is that the surcharge be applied to the passenger rather than to the drivers, but that the charge be less than the toll, for example, $2 per ride. And we also recommend that it not be for taxi users, but only for higher vehicles, which represent a larger amount of street traffic.
Understood. Thank you. And for, you know, just to be clear on my end, I also think the yellow taxi cab should be exempted. But I also think that we need to look at how we make sure we're not dividing New York City, where people are being locked out because they can't afford to go there. And I think as central as the conversation is about, you know, reducing the congestion of motor vehicles, we have to still take into account that we're not going to get rid of all cars, ever. And how do we ensure that we are sharing the space? And I think that that's a lens that we have to look through in terms of whether you're a cyclist, a pedestrian. Like I met people who don't do cars, public transportation, anything. They rather walk, right? There are New Yorkers that just want to walk everywhere too. So how are we sharing that space? How are we making sure that you can go into any community and get to the economic centers, the cultural centers of New York City? Because I think that that often gets left out. And unfortunately, the conversation over the years have become so polarized that we can't just have natural discourse and converse about different ideas. I always feel like iron sharpens iron. Like I want to learn new things, but I want to also share the learned and lived experiences of myself and my community as well.
Agreed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Brooks-Powers, and members of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. My name is Phil Wong, the President of Chinese American Citizens Alliance, Greater New York. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Before I continue my script, I just want to share my experience this morning when I walked down Broadway, walked down Broadway from Canal Street all the way down to City Hall, and I counted the number of vacant stores. There are over three dozen stores that are vacant, and they remain vacant since the COVID recovery, since we walked out of the COVID lockdown. And that is reflective of what's really happening in South Manhattan and many parts of New York City, as the tenants are still battling over the rent that they due to the landlord. They cannot open. They cannot reopen unless that whatever they owe is clear up. And it was this City Council very recently spoke about many measures about stimulating New York's economy, bringing back tourism, bringing back businesses, and now we're talking about congestion pricing. And that's something that is incompatible with the COVID recovery. And I actually request that members of this committee walk down Broadway themselves and see for themselves how many stores are still closed. And this is what we're dealing with, and now we're talking about congestion pricing. And I'm here today to, I speak on behalf of my organization, to oppose the congestion pricing plan, which would halt Manhattan Chinatown's economic recovery from COVID, as well as the recoveries of the tightly coupled small businesses economies of Brooklyn Sunset Park Chinatown and Queens Chinatown around Main Street. I guess my time is due, but I respectfully request the City Council to pass a resolution to exempt commercial traffic in and out of Manhattan's Chinatown, and exempt weekend and late-night traffics for deliveries into downtown Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Raul Rivera and Christopher Johnson.
Ready? All right. Hey, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. Thank you, Chair, for holding this committee hearing. You know, I'm gonna give congestion pricing, and I'm gonna say why. You know, because we got a problem in the City Council, and it's, including you, is that you're not, you guys are acting like you're caring about the poor, but you're guys not. You know, how can you say that congestion pricing is going to benefit the inner districts, where if this happens with congestion pricing, it's going to affect them because there's going to be more cops in the stations? Then if you put this in with congestion pricing, this is going to really increase the fees for a lot of things, especially when it comes to food, because the global bridges, the trucking companies are going to start spending a lot of money. So what do you think is going to happen? It's going to be more money for the people that pay out of pocket, especially in Frog Rockaway that you serve. And you're not telling people that at all, where if this happens, they're going to have to be paying more money because of the shipping fees, and more cops to the stations, and they're going to be forced to pay. Now, another thing I want to bring up is that I think that a number of you council members are captive to TransAl. And the reason that you guys are supporting this congestion pricing is because you guys are scared of TransAl. You're scared of the executive director. You're scared of Tri-State, New York League Conservatory Voters, Work of Justice Project, Los Angeles NISTOS. You guys are scared of open plans. You guys are not serving the people when you're pushing this bill in our faces. This is not going to benefit us at all. All it's going to do is help the pockets of the MTA, and help the pockets of TransAl, and open plans, and all these other corrupt so-called advocacy organizations that mostly fighting for the little guy, especially the Riders Alliance. You know, and I'm gonna tell this right now, I don't care what you think, you know, 2025, all you guys are going to be voted out if you support this bill. So that's all I got to say, and thank you.
Point of clarification for the record, there is no bill under consideration. Raul, you can go.
Good afternoon. My name is Raul Rivera. I'm a New York native. I'm a TLC driver advocate. And our testimony here that we're giving today is probably going to cause our bills to be forfeited. We're trying to pass bills in your committee, and we will forfeit those bills. We cannot bend over backwards just to advocate for some bills. We have council members in this committee that are being silent. They keep saying it's a state issue, that it's a state issue. But you council members that are against congestion pricing could be out there speaking, right? We have councilmen, we have 51. You can hold a press conference and stand out there and say you're for it or you're against it. I approach council members, and they don't even want to give me an answer. This is beyond congestion pricing. This is the legacy of this city, the legacy of this city. This is the legacy of this city, the legacy of this committee and all the committees. If you're a council member, you have to say that you're for it or against it. If you're for it, you cannot advocate for people of color. You say that you advocate for people of color, transportation deserts, and the poor, but you're being silent when it comes to congestion pricing. You can unite, you can be out there and fight for the New Yorker. You don't have a voice for the New Yorker, you're not speaking for us. We have to come here and speak, we have to testify, we got to do it in two minutes. You are not standing with the New Yorker. Your legacy is going to be that you failed the New Yorker. When you look back to reminisce on your time in the council, you're going to realize that you failed the New Yorker and the people of color that you say you represent. Don't forget that. We're upset, we're very upset. We're upset that you're not being vocal. You could be more vocal, and you're not doing it. Thank you, Mr. Holden, for being vocal for the New Yorker. What about Joe Borelli's resolution? Gives a voice to the people, what's wrong with that? Put it on the ballot. If you put it on the ballot, people have a choice, they'll say yes or no. But they don't want to put it on the ballot, because New Yorkers are going to say no to congestion pricing. They're going to say no. And most New Yorkers don't own a vehicle. And it's a farce, because New York City is not going to save the planet. It's not going to save the planet. It's a money grab, it's a crime. It's a crime, it's being robbed without a gun. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. We'll now turn to those who are online virtually.
Thank you. We're going to begin our remote portion. Our first speaker will be Miriam Benzman, followed by Rick Horan.
Miriam, can you hear us?
We'll move on to Rick Horan.
I'm sorry, there appears to be some sort of technical difficulties.
Can we hear you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Rick Horan, Executive Director of QueensLink. My written and verbal testimony today is in support of Resolution 390 that asks for an EIS for QueensLink, a new subway connection that will improve access to education, jobs, healthcare, and recreation for 47,000 daily riders, according to the MTA. The stated justification for congestion pricing is that it will fund new public transit capital projects that will reduce New Yorkers' reliance on the automobile. Sadly, that's not the way things are shaping up. Take, for instance, the QueensLink Rails and Trails proposal, which would reuse the only north-south rail corridor in Queens, whose 2.3 million residents suffer the longest commutes in the nation. For reasons unknown, reactivation of this rail line has not been promoted by the MTA. First, their feasibility study was sandbagged for over a year, and then they inflated the cost of the project by billions of dollars. Similarly, without any community input, the mayor decided that the city-owned land should not be used to relieve decades of transit inequities, but instead used for a new skinny park. Meanwhile, New York taxpayers are spending $1 billion to widen the Van Wyk Expressway. This will likely lead to just more congestion. Buses are not the answer either. Even SBS buses on dedicated bus lanes, such as on Woodhaven Boulevard, struggle to reach 12 miles an hour average speed. Ironically, QueensLink is located right in the middle of these two ever-congested north-south corridors. Sometimes the answer is right in front of us. We call on the mayor and the City Council--
Thank you, time expired.
You could finish your statement, yep.
Do I have a couple of more seconds?
Couple more seconds.
We call on the mayor and the City Council to put the brakes on the Queensway Park project until we have time, we as a city have time to study the use of this right-of-way for transit, and we call upon the MTA to conduct an objective, 20-year needs assessment that we can use to objectively determine whether QueensLink is the best use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next hear from Biravi Desai, followed by Brandon Buchanan.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Beata V. Desai. I'm the Executive Director of the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for this public hearing and for your words of solidarity with the drivers of our city. The Taxi Workers Alliance has over 27,000 members, and our members drive across this city. Both our yellow cab members and our Uber and Lyft members, livery green cab drivers, are all looking to be held harmless against congestion pricing. Let's start with the yellow cab industry. There is no sector that more desperately needs this exemption. Since COVID, I mean, we can talk about the history that preceded COVID, but since COVID alone, 40% of the medallions are on a shelf. They don't even have a vehicle attached to them. Yellow cabs right now are only 1% of the total traffic in the Central Business District, even though 33% of the cabs are not active since COVID. Like, they may be out of storage, but they're not even active on the streets. So there's 33% less cabs that are working today than before COVID, yet each individual driver that's working has 25% less fares today than they did even before COVID. Overall, the yellow cab industry has lost 50% of its ridership. This is a workforce, this is an industry that is desperate to survive and to bounce back. A third surcharge would not only be deeply unfair, when this is the sector that's been paying a surcharge since 2009, and on every single trip, long before anybody else was subsidizing the MTA, the yellow cab industry stepped up and played that role. Back then, liveries were exempt with the wish from the state legislature--
Your time has expired.
--that they would be given time to grow. Well, today, the yellow cab industry is asking for simple survival. We know Uber and Lyft already support upper-trip fee, and we're pleased to see that as a way to make sure that our Uber and Lyft drivers are also held harmless from this. Thank you, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Brandon Buchanan, followed by Eric McClure.
Your time has begun.
Good afternoon. My name is Brandon Buchanan with the American Bus Association, and for more than nearly 100 years, we've represented the private motor coach industry, as well as the destinations that motor coaches go to, as well as the manufacturers and those who plan trips as part of the tourism programs. First of all, we definitely want to say that we are not against congestion pricing, but we do see that motor coaches, as has been stated before by other people giving testimony, that motor coaches are a congestion solution. And so there is precedent, there are laws, for motor coaches to at least be treated the same as transit when it comes to tolling solutions. There are a number of locations, not just in the city of New York, including in New Jersey, including the Garden State Parkway, the New York State Thruway of I-495, I-66, et cetera, where motor coaches are treated the same as transits. In many cases, we act in concert with transit in many service applications, not only bringing commuters downtown from outlying suburbs, including some of the suburbs in Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and in some cases Connecticut, as well as the Hudson Valley that were not part or treated as stakeholders during the environmental assessment process. But motor coaches also provide emergency services, not just for transit vehicles, but also for Amtrak when they break down or are impacted by severe weather, and we stand their stead as part of the Amtrak Thruway program. In fact, recently, you've seen it in the papers, motor coaches are even making plane-to-plane connections. So although this program, this pilot program, is intended to provide congestion relief by not exempting motor coaches or at least providing equal treatment to transit, this program does not really seem to seriously address congestion. We would hope that there'd be more initiatives in support of congestion mitigation issues, such as increased bus parking, similar to what we have seen in other cities. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you for having so many different commentators provide you comments today. It's unfortunate the Traffic Mobility Review Board is also not--
Your time has expired, thank you.
--allowed this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Eric McClure, followed by Yatin Chu.
Your time has begun.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Brooks Powers. My name is Eric McClure. I'm the Executive Director of Streets PAC, and I have to note that we're a little disappointed that we are not one of the organizations that the City Council is afraid of, apparently. With New York City's congestion pricing having received final approval from the Federal Highway Administration in June, the MTA could begin tolling as early as next spring. The program is essential to reducing traffic congestion with the Manhattan Central Business District, which by some estimates costs the city's economy $15 billion a year and to providing revenue critical to the MTA's capital budget. TMRB is in the process of making final determinations on the tolling schedule, and the MTA is beginning to install tolling infrastructure. Congestion pricing, which we have supported for many years, is happening. However, New York City has been mostly AWOL in preparing for congestion pricing. In other cities that have implemented congestion charges, notably Stockholm in London, significant improvements in transit service and cycling infrastructure were put in place to help encourage and ease the transition from private vehicles to more sustainable modes. It's especially important to make meaningful investments in transit in parts of the city that are poorly served by the existing system. The City Council can help by pushing the Adams administration to accelerate upgrades to bus service, especially the rollout of new protected bus lane mileage mandated by the Streets Plan. London added four new high-capacity bus routes into its congestion zone before activating its tolling program, leading to a large increase in bus ridership. Stockholm acted similarly. The Council should be demanding similar plans from City Hall. Expanding and improving the city's bike network should also be a priority as the launch of congestion pricing nears. On the streets of the city of London, bikes now outnumber cars during peak times, a result of a significant investment in and commitment to cycling infrastructure. Here in New York, many of the bike lanes within the Central Business District are already heavily used and taking advantage of reduced car and truck traffic to widen bike lanes on First, Second, Sixth, and Eighth Avenue avenues, and improving crosstown bike routes, as Bike New York suggests, would be a smart step. The Council should also advocate for significant enhancements to the bike network in neighborhoods that are adjacent to or near--
Your time has expired, thank you.
--tolling zones. Western Queens, the Upper East Side, and Upper West Side, and Harlem, which will help promote and safe and seamless bike commutes. I have some additional comments, which I will include in the written testimony that we will submit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Yatin Chu, followed by Lucy Coteen.
Time has begun.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Yatin Chu, President of Asian Wave Alliance, and I'm testifying today on behalf of AWA to oppose congestion pricing. The proposed plan would adversely impact New York City's Asian neighborhoods and communities, particularly in Manhattan's Chinatown, Sunset Park, and Bay Ridge. Besides being a mobility tax on New Yorkers to get around their city, there are many reasons we share with other opponents of congestion pricing. Many Asians live in transit deserts, which necessitates driving, MTA's incompetence in fare collection, which amounts to $700 million a year, increased congestion outside of Manhattan, and the subways and buses have gotten more dangerous in the past few years, especially for Asian New Yorkers. For the Chinese community living in Manhattan's Chinatown, this plan would destroy the way of life and have a disparate impact for the low-income residents and small businesses. Congestion pricing is a daily tax. It will increase operational costs for all businesses, groceries, and restaurants, would depend on daily food deliveries from distributors in Brooklyn and from South Bronx. Costs of living will skyrocket for local residents because of this increased cost of additional daily tolls. The Asian elderly would depend on family members to drive them to medical appointments, and assisting their shopping will also face unique challenges due to language barriers and lack of technological sophistication. Many elderly are not able to hop on a city bike or use Rideshare apps. Congestion pricing will also discourage visitors from outer boroughs in neighboring states who drive here because of access to public transportation is challenging. They come to support local businesses, restaurants, Buddhist temples, churches, Chinese schools, and a cultural way of life that is unique to Chinatown. Congestion pricing will create an existential problem for Chinatown. Longtime residents will be forced out because they will no longer be able to afford the cost of living. This is how gentrification begins. While congestion pricing might sound appealing for cleaner air, the reality is that congestion pricing is only good for lower Manhattan and will be worse for surrounding neighborhoods, such as Bay Ridge and Sunset Park--
Your time has expired, thank you.
--which are 30% to 40% Asian. Could I just finish with a few points in terms of what we would like you to consider?
If you can just--
If you can just--
Sorry, if you could just wrap up and then you could submit it in writing, so if you could close.
Thank you. Let me just end and conclude my testimony with just three asks that we'd like the Council to consider. One, exempt weekend and late-night traffic. Two, exempt commercial traffic to and from Chinatown. And finally, three, exempt passenger vans that shuttle people from the three Chinatowns in Flushing, Sunset Park, and Manhattan. Thank you for the additional time.
Thank you. And I just want to also, once again, remind those participating in today's hearing, the City Council is not the one that will be determining the exemptions. So I just want to make sure the public is clear that this is going to come out of the Mobility Review Board and the MTA. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Lucy Coteen, followed by Penelope Katsaras.
Starting time.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you, Chair. Last August, the MTA held public hearings for several days. The people who testified spoke three to one against congestion pricing, and with good reasons, because they will be heard. Did any of you, any of the MTA, listen to the people? I did, and I took notes, extensive notes, and I will send them to you. And all will be heard when all prices for all groups will increase due to the tax on trucks, which will be passed along. There's no doubt about that. There are over 100,000 app cars circulating in the city. DOT has removed streets from circulation. Thousands of parking places have been taken away throughout the city, creating more cars circling the streets. All areas outside of the zone will see an increase in cars. Many people have called for a forensic audit of the MTA to see where they can cut costs and increase efficiency, including looking at the fact that many executive salaries are well over $300,000. A few points. The people who will be hurt the most are the working-class people who have no choice but to take a car into the area, many are the workers who have to carry tools and equipment to do their jobs, and essential workers, including city workers who work an odd hour. It creates the idea that one part of the city is more precious than other parts of the city, and that we have to pay extra to enter there with a car, but not in other areas. Manhattan becomes a shiny city on the hill that we have to pay to enter. If you live in the pricing area and use a car, you have to pay an extra tax just to return to your home, even if you live half a block from the FDR and have a parking lot. You can't leave your home without paying to get back in. There are equitable ways to raise money, such as by taxing the wealthy, such as an increase in capital gains, an increase of money on capital gains made in the stock market, which does not earn money, and dedicate it to the MTA.
Your time has expired, thank you.
So I will submit the rest. Sorry, I have much more to say.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Penelope Katsaras, followed by Peter Patino.
Starting time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hello, hi. Okay, I live in East Elmhurst, which is a transportation desert, and one reason that I don't trust the MTA to fix the problems is because they just put a bus lane two blocks from my house on Northern Boulevard. I have been advocating for years to get a bus from East Elmhurst to Manhattan. Guess who they forgot? There is not one stop for us, for our community, and we are a transportation desert. There is not one stop for us, for our community, and we are a transportation desert. Now, that is not the main reason I've been on this call for hours. The reason I'm on this call for hours is for my mother, who lives in New Jersey, who lives in rural New Jersey, that I cannot get to on public transportation. And, okay, I wrote something. My mother lives in rural New Jersey. She is eighty years old, on a fixed income. She isn't wealthy. I live in East Elmhurst, Queens, and I drive a sixteen-year-old car. There are three ways to get to New Jersey from Queens. One is the Holland Tunnel, two is the Lincoln Tunnel, and three is the George Washington Bridge. If the city puts the first two out of commission due to price, that's exactly what you're doing, by the way. Everyone will take the George Washington Bridge. This will increase traffic and gridlock in the Bronx and Fort Lee. My mother said she will drive to the Tappan Zee to avoid the traffic, but that's an extra hour in the car for her, and she's eighty years old. Congestion pricing will hurt families who want to visit each other. My choice will also be to either sit in heavy George Washington Bridge traffic or drive up an hour out of my way to the Tappan Zee. When my cousin in New Jersey had cancer, I drove her to chemotherapy. The doctor, I drove her to the doctor. I drove her to church. My EZ Pass bill was high. There was no way to get a person with a brain tumor around on a city bus in New Jersey. There was no way for me to get to her without a car.
Your time has expired, thank you.
She didn't live near a bus stop. Think about the hardships congestion pricing is causing families. I know several people who live in Queens and travel to New Jersey for work. I know a small business owner who travels to Union City from Queens. The direct way from Queens is to take the Lincoln Tunnel to Union City. Why does he now have to travel an extra hour at least? Why must we be forced to travel way out of our way? My friend can't take public transportation due to the nature of the business. Thank you.
Thank you. And please submit your testimony in writing when you have a moment.
Okay, I will.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Peter Patino, followed by Jean Han.
Starting time.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you. We hear you.
Oh, boy. Okay, you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Peter Patino. I am a member of Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce and NYSMCA. However, I am reporting because I have been involved in every one of the posed congestion pricing since the inception of it. I am calling this the smell test. Number one, mo- motor cars here have, have uh says that there's autos and motorcycles, which are thirty-nine percent. Years ago, it was nearly eighty percent cabs. Cabs are getting charged now, and how come the congestion is not lessed? Smell test number one. Smell test number two, that being collected for the cabs, what's happening? No loss in traffic. That's smell test number two. Smell test number three, pollution. It has to be done the right way. You're not going to stop pollution so fast. If you test it, fine. If you don't test it, by the way, asthma, most of it is done by, uh, is made by uh, uh, uh genes. Test, uh smell test number three, how, how many, how, how, how many uh workers are going to be discriminated against? Let's, let's test that out. Test that smell test number four, uh techno, smell test number five, excuse me, technology. It is not there to make all these exemptions. I know it, you know it, smell it and find out. I'm representing the old school, older people, people that cannot take the bicycles to work, people that you're forgetting about all, and you, if you're forgetting about all these people, come on. Num- number three, three, smell test is discriminatory, and uh I feel that you need to review this again, and that's the story. What about uh, 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 the, the council? What about the, the, the voters? What about people? And why are we doing this? Smell, smell, go overseas.
Time expired, thank you.
People overseas, check it out. When the, when the, when the, when the uh pollu-, when everybody gets used to the pricing, the damn traffic comes back. It doesn't stay away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Jean Han, followed by Dorothy LeConte.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Jean Han, and I live in Queens. Thank you, Chair Brooks-Powers and the committee, for this opportunity to speak. I'm here today to testify on behalf of my family and many others like mine who will be adversely impacted by congestion pricing. My husband is an essential worker at Bellevue Hospital as an equipment technician. Almost every night throughout the first two years of COVID, he worked without a single break or taking a day off, many times during long shifts, working on his days off, and working off-hour shift because the city's largest hospital is perpetually short-staffed. He takes his job seriously. He made these sacrifices because he knows lives depended on his will, even though our daughter constantly wondered why he wasn't coming at home, why he wasn't coming home at bedtime to tuck her in. And the main reason he was able to extend his duties is because he was able to drive to and from work since Bellevue Hospital isn't easily accessible by subway. He still doesn't get home until midnight. He is not alone. He, like many of his colleagues, works off-hour shifts, which are a necessity to keep the hospital open twenty-four-seven. It is not safe for him to ta- to walk fifteen minutes to the nearest subway at midnight or at five AM and then wait for a train during unreliable off-peak subway schedule. Taking public transportation this late at night would double his commute time home. If con- congestion pricing goes through without any exemptions for Manhattan hospital workers as planned, the city will lose them. Asking essential workers who already sacrificed so much during COVID and who are still making sacrifices to pay a regressive tax, which would amount to approximately six to seven thousand dollars a year, just to work at an readily, a ready-thinkless job will be the nail on the coffin for the city. This sacrifice goes too far and just doesn't make sense. I request council members to give the serious consideration in their advocacy, advocacy of the constituents. Is the city prepared to lose thousands of essential workers like the ones at Bellevue? Is it healthcare for the millions that serve annually in Manhattan hospitals where lives are saved, worth preserving over a plan that was contrived because the MTA can't get its act together and where congestion will just be.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Create additional health disparities outside the ivory towers of lower Manhattan? I am also requesting that exemptions be done in such a way where busy, low-income and working families don't have the time and don't have the exorbitant hours to spend doing bookkeeping and filing their taxes just to get a reduced fare.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Dorothy LeConte, followed by Michelle Bernbaum.
Starting time.
Uh, we'll hear now from Michelle Bernbaum, and then followed by Jeff Rose.
Starting time.
Michelle, you're on muted.
Okay, we'll move on to Jeff Rose, followed by Jane Locke.
Starting time.
Uh, am I up?
Loud and clear.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Rose. I am the owner of Attitude New York Show for Transportation and the President of the Limo Association of New York, resem- representing operators in the New York City TLC Luxury Limousine category. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be heard. There's been much discussion regarding how impending congestion pricing should be structured regarding for higher vehicles or FHVs. In the simplest terms, we strongly urge the parties to heed the call of the Regional Planning Association headed by the estimable Ray McGuire. And I would like to make some correction to the remarks that Tiffany Ann Taylor, the VP for Transportation of the RP made. Their current recommendation is not to impose the standard twenty-dollar fare that's been proposed. Their uh suggestion is, and I'm quoting from the RPA, exempt taxis and other for higher vehicles from the congestion charge, but keep the current surcharge on fares within the congestion zone. FHVs are already paying a fee of two dollars and seventy-five cents, and the RPA suggests keeping that. Per their report, they urge that the new plan exempt us from these charges but keep the current surcharge. This would occur within the twenty, uh, this would concur with the twenty-five state and local legislators who strenuously argued in the letter to the Traffic Mobility Review Board that instead passengers of FHV services should pay a small extra surcharge for each ride in the congestion pricing zone below Sixtieth Street in Manhattan. Per the RPA, and I'm quoting again, "The current surcharge for trips taken in these vehicles is a more effective method for both managing congestion and reaching the revenue target. Regardless of the congestion charge for higher dri- driver vehicles must enter the zone to work, but the per-trip charge gives passengers an incentive to walk, bike, or take transit. The per-trip charge also raises an estimated four hundred."
Your time has expired, thank you.
Which would be lost. We need to move away from the current structure because if you charge FHVs to go in and out of the zone, they will have very little incentive to leave the zone in between jobs, and this will actually further exacerbate the problem. A robust, affordable FHV market will be critical to encouraging visitors and workers to leave their cars at home. The RPA is saying if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We strongly urge the decision-makers to heed the advice of the RPA rather than make this situation worse by forcing FHV workers to stay and congregate in the congestion zone.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Jane Locke, followed by Glenn Bolofsky.
Starting time. Hi, can you hear me? Hello? Yes, we can hear you. Okay, hi. I live and work literally two blocks north of Manhattan Bridge, and I look and walk outside the Bari and surrounding streets. And aside from maybe three or four hours a day, the streets do not experience congestion at all. In fact, the streets of Chinatown are pretty dead after seven o'clock, so it seems utterly disingenuous to charge a punitive twenty dollars plus congestion pricing during the vast majority of the day when there's no congestion whatsoever. For reference, Singapore, the godfather of congestion pricing and herald it as possibly the most successful example, charges fifty cents to four dollars for only the two to three high congestion hours in the morning and evening. There is no toll on Sundays or holidays at all. But that is not what we have suggested here. Why not? Because plainly, our so-called congestion pricing is not actually about congestion or clean air or all the things that they claim. The way the MTA is now, I do not want people like my parents to use public transportation. In my trips, I have dealt with swaltering heat, flooded stairs and platforms, trip hazards, icy slippery, dirty floors, angry aggressive riders. My mother has had spinal surgery twice, and my father has very high blood pressure. Both are older Asians, one of the most targeted and vulnerable demographics in the past several years. I appreciate that the MTA is looking to address many issues. Frankly, they're longstanding issues they've not fixed yet, and I don't believe it's fair to punish vulnerable populations for using the transportation that is safer and better for them. In the meantime, in order to force them to use transportation that is problematic for them, and I expect that their situation is very similar to many in our community. I surveyed over fifty members of the Chinatown community who live and work in the CBD. Some eye-opening stats. Sixty-two percent responded that they or their family visit or leave CBD four or more times a week. Ninety-three percent said they use cars to travel to and from the CBD. Among the reasons they said they use cars, seventy-one percent said they need to carry or transport a lot of goods or people. Seventy percent said other methods of transportation are not available or would take significantly more time. Forty-two percent said I or other passengers I travel with have physical limitations that will make the other methods difficult or dangerous sometimes or all of the time. Sixty-four percent said I am concerned about personal safety of myself or other passengers if they use other methods.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Okay. I will submit the rest in testimony.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Glenn Bolofsky, followed by Maria Danzillo.
Starting time.
Thank you so much. Uh, good afternoon to everyone. Uh, I want to thank um, um, Madam Chair, uh, Selena Enbrooks-Powers and her great team, central staff, all the council members, and elected officials who appear today, as well as the public, uh, who took off a lot of time, uh, to appear, and all the advocates who are very passionate about whether they want congestion pricing or not want congestion pricing. There's advantages and disadvantages to everything. MTA needs funding. We need funding. Should it be all on the backs of drivers?
We could hear like a minute and thirty seconds after we five hours.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, please continue.
It should not be all on the backs of drivers. The federal government hasn't stepped in sufficiently. New York City is supposed to be the driving economic force of the country. Well, if that's true, federal government really should be stepping in to fund not so much drivers. It particularly hurts individuals in transit deserts who need cars. Cars a part of life. To rip it from people, to constantly say people shouldn't have cars, well, it's kind of a nonstarter. You know, it's almost them saying in the reverse, people shouldn't have bicycles. Both are wrong, and both are right. People need cars, people need bicycles, there's room enough for everybody, and everybody has to fa- pay their fair share. I don't know that the biking community is also chipping in as well to drivers. I don't know. I'm asking that question if someone can respond. But the bottom line is, for people in transportation deserts and people who are elderly or are disabled and need a vehicle, these individuals should be cut a break. I know the committee, I know the council doesn't have the authority, but it's here to listen to the comments of the public, and I thank you for listening to my comments. The other part of my.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Okay.
You could finish your statement. Go ahead, Glenn, you could finish your statement.
Thank you so much. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So, so simp- simply put, you know, when you're in a transportation desert, you've got a car, you need it for your livelihood, or you need to take care of your family member, it's, it's impossible to drive around, uh, take public transportation when you're sick. It's just not, not possible. You know, God forbid someone gets sick, you can't do it. Now, these individuals, they get a parking ticket, then they're socked with having to travel to the Parking Bureau on top of it, they can't get a virtual hearing. So everything is inconvenient for the driving public. There's EZ Pass tolls, registration fees, parking tickets, EZ Pass tolls, and now congestion. So compliance, regulatory compliance, which is my world on parking fines, is, is impossible just with parking fines. When you add EZ Pass for the average person, it becomes another layer. And now congestion charges on top of that, they almost need a full-time bookkeeper and just to keep track of this all. So my recommendation, if the council has the authority to consider, uh, some funding for an ombudsman, uh, to, to help ensure that our constituents in every district are not taking advantage of when the congestion charges inundate people with bills and tolls for improper fines, um, and that there's uh some backbone, uh, that the public will have independent of the taxing authority and collection authority. And I appreciate uh being heard today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Maria Danzillo, followed by Rick Russo.
You may begin.
Yes, good. Okay, my name is Maria Danzillo. I'm Executive Director of the Advocacy and Watchdog Group One City Rising. I want to thank Chairperson Brooks-Powers and members of the committee, and I'm stating for the record that MTA is not present for this public testimony. We are a grassroots advocacy group representing everyday New Yorkers who are probably too busy working today to stay on a five-hour Zoom, but they're nevertheless going to be very negatively impacted by this regressive, outdated, and hurtful tax. We care about what is best for the city as a whole, and it is clear from so many people who testified that the city as a whole is going to be very harmed by this tax. Residents, working in middle class, commuters, small businesses, this is going to feed inflation and cost of living and hurt quality of life in so many communities. And it's being implemented without real transparency and without taking into account many of the real and serious concerns that have been raised by so many people at so many hearings. Hundreds and hundreds of people have testified against this tax, and unfortunately, our concerns and issues are just not being heard. However, I am encouraged by the chairperson's questions today and many of the council members who are speaking out against the congestion tax and what appears to be genuine concern about many of these issues, and I really hope that this oversight continues, and I thank you very much for that. Just a couple of quick points. Not enough resources are being put on improving public safety on public trans- transit, including working cameras in every car and station to protect riders and workers. That just hasn't come up today, and we really need to make sure adequate funds are allocated to that. Not enough is being done to raise revenue so that this tax can be kept to as low as possible, with as many exemptions as possible, as many people advocated for today. And we would. possible as many people advocated for today and we would like to see the MTA do much more to raise capital elsewhere so this task can be kept to a minimum for example we would like to see MTA install appropriate gates to stop fare beating this alone is estimated to save seven hundred million dollars a year people who ride the subway and pay their fair share should not be subsidizing everyone else as for air quality as the chairperson pointed out congestion pricing is actually going to be very problematic
Your time has expired, thank you.
I'm just gonna shut up thank you that are already adversely impacted by bad air and have higher rates of asthma and other environmental issues so better alternatives to this regressive tax should have been considered to make sure the communities outside the zone would not be negatively impacted um as for financial impact on New Yorkers congestion pricing is not going to affect people who can afford it but it is going to hurt so many people in Manhattan who need and want to use their cars as is their right so one other final point I do hope that the council will consider permit parking for residents of those neighborhoods who are going to be negatively affected New York is the exodus from New York is real the loss of the tax base is real it's the highest in the country uh oh I'm sorry just one other point outreach posting a few flyers at bus stops is not the kind of outreach that should have been used to alert the public about this regressive and harmful tax we need much more outreach if we're going to um have this tax uh uh impact people in such a negative way thank you so much for the time and for your extra time thank you.
Thank you we're gonna hear next from Rick Russo followed by Tom Lowe.
Starting time.
Thank you Chair Brooks Hopkins excuse me Chair Brooks Powers and members of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee uh this is Rick Russo Chief Officer at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce and I'm delivering testimony on behalf of the Chamber a boroughwide membership and economic development organization uh the Brooklyn Chamber conducted a survey of our members regarding congestion pricing the respondents represent a cross-section of small businesses across the borough survey results include the following fifty-nine percent of participants do not support congestion pricing twenty percent of participants strongly support congestion pricing nineteen percent of participants support congestion pricing with conditions for those that do not support the measure the top three reasons are double taxation for those who already pay tolls at the tunnels and bridges increased cost of doing business concern that the toll will disproportionately impact low-income groups particularly those who work in the taxi and racha industries and for those who do support the measure their top three reasons are decreasing environmental impact specifically air pollution unclogging New York City's busiest streets reducing traffic raising money for NYC's subway bus and rail system to improve services and for those that support the measure with conditions their top three conditions are pricing variation based on vehicle size pricing variation based on time of day and discounts for low-income drivers uh we recommend the following to ensure that communities are not unfairly burdened and that we continue driving economic growth across the city areas to consider increased transit options and services with the outskirts of Brooklyn we recommend expanded ferry access to Canarsie currently Transit Desert and Coney Island a New York City ferry stop would benefit the community and provide a faster option to get to Manhattan tier pricing by vehicle size and use uh delivery trucks are required to enter Manhattan to meet their customers' demands and schedules they do not have alternative transit options to perform this work currently commercial vehicles are required to pay commercial vehicle tax of four hundred dollars per truck this in addition to the congestion
Your time has expired, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you we'll hear next from Tom Lowe followed by Christopher Schuler.
Starting time. We could hear you.
Hi good afternoon Madam Chair thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today my name is Thomas Slow a small business owner in Chinatown my testimony today is against congestion pricing Chinatown has been through a lot over the past several decades none of which has been more devastating than nine eleven people are still getting sick from the fallout and many have died from the from the different illnesses associated with nine eleven businesses mostly mom and pop shops family-run restaurants and grocery stores closed and never reopen and then Hurricane Sandy hit and left lower Manhattan without electricity for two weeks further exacerbating the downward spiral of Chinatown um well you could say that uh the you know all we we came back from all of this and uh as we were building things back up suddenly coronavirus hit um and more businesses closed um this time taking down bigger restaurants and supermarkets um a lot of people were left um without work and and the rate the the racism and this discrimination against Asians were on a rise Asian hate crimes became a thing most of which happened in Chinatown and now with the inflammation inflammation of the congestion tax it could very well be the nail in the coffin for Chinatown it will kill what's left of the of this historic community it's going to reduce Chinatown to a three four block radius and displace everyone else that is not really catering to the tourists um the economy of Chinatown relies heavily on outside visitors many which rely on driving it will deter everyone but the rich from driving into Chinatown as many other speakers have already said um and and another thing I don't see how carve-outs really benefit us either I'm not really asking for a carve-out uh one I rarely drive two most of the people I know who live in Chinatown don't even own a vehicle and three it's not gonna it's not gonna promote people from coming into Chinatown it's still gonna keep people out um I've been told that the congestion tax has already been passed and there's nothing we can do about it um so all I'm asking is if there's some way we can delay the
Your time has expired, thank you.
Um yeah just finish my last sentence I just want a chance for us to be able to get up to get back on our feet and to you know and to give us a fair fight because you know this is just gonna kill kill our economy thank you.
Thank you we'll hear next from Christopher Schuler.
Starting time.
Good 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 afternoon Madam Chair um thank you for the opportunity to 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 present today uh my 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 name is Christopher Schuyler I'm a senior staff attorney with New York Lawyers for the Public Interest uh the 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 disability justice program um and also I'm a person who stutters so um to just at the outset uh New York Lawyers for Public Interest is um is broadly supportive of congestion pricing with respect to to the various goals um that are inherent in the plan in terms of reduced reduced congestion uh which will free up the roads for emergency vehicles and and para-transit vehicles as well as improved air quality and of course uh for 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 funding the MTA's capital plan um of which ten billion of it has been promised to 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 needed accessibility improvements um however you know people with disabilities and those belonging to environmental justice community should not should not bear the 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 burden of of paying for 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 this uh that they've been long underserved by 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 mass transit um in the instance of people with disabilities uh the subway system is is largely inaccessible um just through through the through the decisions of the MTA over decades of time uh and so so they rely on on para-transit and um and 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 other services like for higher vehicles um it's moreover recognizing that the council um doesn't have authority that that the Traffic Mobility Review Board has when it comes to exemptions and the implementation um we uh at NLP are are concerned with um what proportion of the money um funded by the capital or by congestion pricing will go to actual accessibility improvements throughout the system uh we know they're they're calling for about fifteen billion funded by congestion pricing they promised uh ten billion to accessibility improvements over the capital plan what proportion of that is going to accessibility um and also what if you know what if um if the congestion pricing plan is struck down or delayed by the various challenges does the MTA have a contingency in in order uh the next up we we uh wanted to bring up accessorize and the MTA earlier said um about the satisfaction numbers being very high you know that was those satisfaction numbers are largely driven by the by the success of the on-demand pilot um in its unrestricted form the MTA talked about expanding the pilot uh and saying it's gonna keep the same budget but that's because there's going to be increased costs and fare rationing so we're wondering whether some of this congestion pricing money could 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 go to accessorize um instead of instead of to customers uh and I wanted to talk about exemptions again um the exemptions are quite are very murky in terms of how they'll benefit people with disabilities we know that that people with disability license plates will be exempt as well as accessorize passengers but what about uh people who use for 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 higher vehicles um who who have to who can't use the subway or due to the accessorize uh issues uh rely on for higher vehicles to get around to get to their jobs uh will they be paying uh the toll and lastly um just on um environmental justice communities so uh we know that that certain environmental justice communities such as the South Bronx um are 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 have increased risk of air pollution and that the MTA is promising certain mitigation measures uh but we we we're wondering whether there there's there there's data available to to support whether the whether the mitigation measures will actually be effective uh in reducing the risks and lastly uh those those people who live in environmental justice communities uh often live in transit deserts as well and so we think that uh that they should be either exempt or or have cost-saving plans um the thank you I'll submit my testimony um uh in written form in more detail as well.
Thank you uh I'm gonna if any of the following people are available on Zoom please raise your hand and you'll be called in order that you do Thomas Greck Lawrence Zagby John Banzer Axel Carrion Wilma Cordero Gus Lampropoulos Mei Zhang Abraham Morris Elizabeth Adams Miriam Benzman Dorothy LeConte Michelle Bernbaum Maulin Metta Zoe Liu Kathy Chan Ishtyak Ahmed Anna Champagni Carrie Crystal Urshad Karim and Eric Shapiro Renfro. Okay if we have inadvertently missed anyone that is registered to testify today and has yet to be called please use the Zoom hand function if you are testifying remotely and you'll be called in order that your hand is raised if you are testifying in person please come to the dais.
Thank you for all of those that took part in today's Committee on Transportation Infrastructure Hearing um and shared your thoughts around the congestion pricing program that is imminent um we look forward to working closely with the Department of Transportation the TLC as well as the MTA as the implementation continues to roll out with that this committee meeting is now adjourned.